And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia, we have the meeting announcement.
Okay, pursuant to AB 361, this meeting will be held entirely virtually. Authors available for public participation are detailed on the first page of the agenda.
You. Councilmember Mark Joseph. Mark, you're muted.
I wasn't when I said it, but I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Miriam Abudalmas is.
Excuse.
Thank you. And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you.
You.
Moving on, report on closed session. Confirmation report will action, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council convened an open session at 5:31 to ascertain if there were any comments on the items agendized for closed session, and there were none, so you adjourned to closed session at 5:31 to address the matters agendized. You considered matters one and two, but there was no consideration of item three. You concluded at 6:29 PM. And with respect to the two matters that were considered, there will be a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of 54957.1. That would conclude the report.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ross. Moving on to our agenda, you know, it's daylight saving time has got that little thing about trying to get our sleep pattern readjusted. Yeah, so hopefully we're all rested up and getting used to getting up an hour earlier. But we get it back in October. So proclamations and presentations. Well, this evening gives great, great pleasure as a council to recognize National Women's History Month, March 2022. Whereas since 1987, the United States has formally recognized March as National Women's History Month. Setting aside March to inspire those globally to learn about women's history and where the American Canyon women of all races, class, and ethnic backgrounds have positively contributed to the city by playing a vital role in every sphere of life, inside and outside of the home, to build strength and compassion and to express their vision for this community as a group. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements such as the decent movement, which creates more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the ways of science, literature, teaching, and the study of American history. And whereas the Optimist International of American Canyon encourages the city of American Canyon's residents to join in the observation of Women's National Women's History Month and to educate and pass on learned and wisdom regarding women's extraordinary contributions and on the progress that still need to reach equality. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor of American Canyon, do hereby proclaim 4th of 2022 as National Women's Day and proclaim the month of March 2022 as National Women's History Month. Anybody here wish to comment?
I have no hands raised.
Well, thank you very much. Well, it's quite in the conference.
Thank you.
I would just remark that in my professional world, I've worked with many women who are great leaders and clinicians. Hey. Moving on, I have received public items not on the agenda.
Mayor Garcia, we have not received written comments for items not on the agenda. I have a couple of hands raised at this time. First, I have Julia Salvador. Go ahead, Julia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Julia Salvador. I am an American Canyon resident living in the 400 block of Wetlands Edge Road. I am a new mom and a local small business owner, and I'm invested in the future of my community. Tonight, I want to comment on the increasing traffic loads and speeds that I'm seeing in American Canyon. My house is located in the middle of two elementary and middle schools. During drop off and pickup times, it's a nightmare trying to back out of my driveway. My husband, holding my five-month-old son, will walk into the middle of the street, raise his hand to the cars in order to stop traffic so that I may safely exit my vehicle. When my mother-in-law wants to take my son out for a walk in the stroller, I tell her not to go during these times. The elderly walking with the very young are a vulnerable group. In response to a couple of emails that I sent to council members, Pierre Washington graciously agreed to meet with me and my husband about this at my home. On his way here, we witnessed a car speed past him right in front of my house. As I go for walks along the Wetlands Edge Trail, I see this more frequently. I have major concerns about pedestrian safety next to this beautiful trail. I am a huge fan of the traffic cushions that have been installed on the 500 block. They're amazing. I sent an email to council earlier today with a link to the petition, Stop the Selfish Speeders. We have 93 signatures for support of increased traffic calming efforts from the city and great ideas within the petition. Safe Streets should have a special workshop or a dedicated town hall meeting for a true community dialogue, not just three minutes of one-way comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks for your comment.
I have Justin Hamilton Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and State Council. This is Justin.
Good evening.
I want to shout, I want to shout out with Jason Halli for thank you for emailing me. And I am counting down opening Seattle Hall for two year. Wow. So I'd be very, I'd be happy to be on Zoom and see the in-person live. Oh, yeah. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I have a dial-in. Hand raised. Let's see. Go ahead, Speaker, if you could state your name, please. You're on. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Tammy Wong. I'm trying this dial-in by phone tonight. Um, I wanted to thank Julia Salvador for her comments and the petition. And I wanted to echo that statement about having a forum where residents can talk about traffic safety. I know it was discussed at an earlier council meeting, and it was agreed that traffic safety would come back to council as a topic. So I hope that in some manner or fashion that, that the residents do get the dialogue that we have been seeking with council on this important topic. Thank you for your time and attention to this. I know you have many topics of importance before you, and I hope you will be considering this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on just. I just got a notice that someone's trying to call in for public comments, so let me just give them a moment to connect. I also have Beth Marcus. Let me go. Go ahead, Beth.
Good evening.
Evening.
Oh, my gosh. I just wanted to, I know you guys are tired of hearing me, but I just want to echo the same concerns that Wetland Edge has, Melvin Road is having as well. I know we keep talking about it, but I just need to address that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I have no other hands raised. Is Daniel or David that was going to call in? Have you connected? David. I don't think he's connected. Mayor Garcia, if you want to move ahead, we could reopen. Okay, okay. Thank you.
We can catch him if he can connect. Okay. Public comment, the last caller mentioned this man is just connecting. Pass back to that. Moving on now to the agenda changes, council. If not, I'll accept the motion for the consent calendar. I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember. Sorry, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. Moving on to our agenda, public hearings, there are none this evening. Moving on to business items, item number nine, Juneteenth Independence Day, especially event.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a point of order here. I believe I should recuse myself from this item because I'm the Secretary Treasurer for the Arts Foundation, which will be the recipient of any council consideration on this idea, item. So I'm going to turn off my voice and turn off my video and go get a glass of water.
Very good.
How do you recuse yourself during a Zoom? That's interesting.
I was thinking, it's, I appear to have recused myself. I admit I may be able to hear what others are saying, but I'm just going to try to ignore it as much as I can.
It's the digital equivalent. I think it's appropriate.
Yeah. We'll give you a moment to exit, councilman. For this item, though?
Yes, we're, we're ready, Mayor. Teresa, if you wouldn't mind bringing over Brenda Knight as well. This item tonight is approving a donation of the amount of $25,000. It would go to the American Canyon Arts Foundation, who in conjunction with Brenda Knight Events is hosting the city's inaugural Juneteenth special event. And it's just going to be a fabulous event this year on June 19th, Sunday, June 19th, over in Main Street Park. In the, in the agenda item is a list of the program and a little bit of a summary of what folks can expect if they attend. But I also wanted to introduce Brenda from Brenda Knight Events, who will be explaining a little bit more about the, the program and what she's got cooking for us that day. It's, it's an amazing, amazing event with speakers and folks coming from all over the United States, actually, to the little American Canyon to celebrate this for the very first time. And also, just want to take a moment to acknowledge Cherry Walton, our deputy city clerk, who helped pull this presentation together and the staff report, and has been involved, many others in the committee working on this event. So thank you for that, Cherry. Brenda, if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about what we have planned for this year.
Yes, yes, yes. I am so excited. And thank you, Jason, for allowing me to come in to review the program that is set up. From the time people arrive here, they are going to have such a wonderful, fantastic time at our inaugural Juneteenth, Independence Day celebration. Do you have your programs that I sent in with you, councilmembers? We will start today with what's called a program blessing, and this is something that occurs in the African-American community, where when they are going to do things that will, we have to acknowledge our ancestors. And that's what this part of the program will be. But we also inviting all faith nationalities to show our inclusivity here in American Canyon. So that's going to start the day. And the music part of this program, there's going to be a narrator who will go through each type of music that is found in the African-American community, how it became. And before you hear the music, he will give you the history of that music. Then you will sit back and enjoy and enjoy it with an appreciation because you know how it came to be. There will also be gospel praise dancers, African dancers. So we are having all kinds of entertainments. Now, the speakers are descendants of some of our history makers. So we have an educational component because people will be able to learn about some of the our history makers, which is we have one lady who is the great, great-great-granddaughter of a runaway slave. And so she's going to go into details that before we received our freedom, the only way slaves could have freedom is that they had to run away. And so she's going to give that overview, and then it will begin to start showing more of our history when we bring in the great-great-great-granddaughter of Booker T. Washington and the cousin of Rosa Parks. And all different types of music, again, jazz, blues, R and B. Each one of those would be explained before the entertainment begins. And also on your program, you will notice that I have also requested proclamations from our Congress, the Senate, the Assembly, and the supervisor. And I have been in contact with each, and they all are working on it. And, and so hopefully we'll have all of that, and we will also be introducing African-American elected officials that we have invited from other areas as well. The keynote speaker for this event would be Mr. Paul Cobb, who is the publisher of the Post Newspaper Group out of Oakland. He has been around for years. He knows so much of our history. He's going to give us an overview of what we are actually celebrating with the Juneteenth celebration. Paul's, the call for fame for him, when Martin Luther King walked the Pettus Bridge on Bloody Sunday, he was a young reporter at that time, and he was sent there to cover that report. And in the process of him doing that, he was working for the Post Newspaper. He has worked his way all the way up to being a publisher there now. So he's going to talk to us about that. We will have food trucks. We're going to have so much fun through education that day. And so the talk is getting out. People are starting to hear about it. We know we're going to the Napa Valley, Visit Napa Valley is going to be using their media to advertise. I've been talking with the Napa TV. They're going to be doing PSAs and announcements. Becat TV out of Vallejo, even Vallejo's Juneteenth is on Saturday, so we will not be in conflict. And they're going to be advertising, and we just have so much excitement going on at this time, and I just can't wait until it starts. It's going to be our inaugural, but it's going to be that type of inaugural that we can't wait for it to happen again. And I'm certain that the community is going to have a wonderful time of celebration. They're going to have a wonderful time learning, and I'm just looking forward to continuing working and making the plans. And every time I work on it, I get so excited. I'll be up all night.
Well, thank you for, for that, Brenda. Thank you for the, the information and explanation, and the enthusiasm is undeniable. I think we're all excited to see how this event gets, gets pulled together. Staff report kind of outlines the, the transactional framework of, of the donation, and Brenda has been actively soliciting donations from group, the, the T-Bid here, the local T-Bid has already agreed to make donations, and that will help defray some of the cost of the event. I know Brenda's actively working on other efforts to defray some of those costs. There is an existing budget line item in the current year budget for this appropriation. But we wanted to bring this to council as a way of kind of celebrating and, and alerting the community to this event and raising awareness about it. And happy to answer any questions or thoughts that the council has. That's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. And I know, Brenda, you can bring a lot of energy like you always do, so it's going to be a fantastic day. Thanks for all the work.
Thank you.
That, Pierre Washington, Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, I just really want to just say thank you to Brenda for being the leader in organizing this special event. You know, last year it became a federal holiday. And the minute, I think maybe two minutes after it became a national holiday, I had a phone call from Brenda, so saying we have to do something. So I, like the mayor says, I appreciate your, your energy and the work you're putting in, the people that you're gathering with during the week to, to make this a successful event. You have a lot of moving parts, and I just thank you, and you're the right person to lead it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Oro.
Brenda, thanks for leading this. I'm excited to see it come to town. I, I really am. I first learned of Juneteenth in college, actually. And I'm glad to say that it is now a national holiday, and it's something that should be taught since we were young. Very supportive of this event for sure. And in fact, I've already given, was on a panel that voted to provide T-Bid money to you on there. So let's just call that seed funding, Brenda, you know, and go from there. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. I do have a question, though, and, you know, I mean, outside of this event, this is an inaugural event. We want to get it off. We want it to be a tradition. We want it to be a celebration. We want it to be a tradition. The amount here is, I think it's 25,000 that we're looking at to fund tonight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. This is, as far as I know, as far as I remember, this is the largest amount that we're giving to a group or an event. I, I'd like to have, and I, and I'm bringing this up for other groups out there because we've funded groups in the past, usually for different things, and, and I, I can't recall if this has ever been the, the amount. But I want people, and maybe Jason Hall, you can speak to this, I want people to understand, you know, why this is moving forward and why the process is a little bit different, and then go from there, and so that people have this understanding. And I heard a little bit more, if we could explain a little bit more detail on how we may be able to defray those costs, just so that we have a fair and equitable sharing of funds from the city and support from the city for our various groups.
Yeah, sure, Councilmember Oro. Some additional information. We, for a while, the city and the council's been interested in, in trying to facilitate a multicultural event. We have a number of special events throughout the year that are, that are city special events. And at the moment, the city doesn't have the personnel or capacity to take on a new city event, particularly one so close to Fourth of July, which is our, our landmark special event that the city hosts, which is just whatever, two weeks after June 19th. And so, you know, we regularly fund city special events, but we also fund a couple of different programs for community groups. Sometimes when community groups have their own special events, the one that comes to mind is Meet Me in the Street. For example, we provide kind of in-kind services and support for those events. We also provide financial support for different nonprofit groups. We haven't included money in the last two years with the budgets mainly because of COVID. But prior to that, we had included funds for community groups that would submit applications to us. And we fund either sporting equipment or, or different, you know, capital investments, the, the, the lights, the portable lights that the, the youth football team, they see Junior Wolves use is, is an example where we funded them to get some lights so they could practice football at, at night. So we have some of those community programs as well, and we are looking to include budget back in the 2223 upcoming budget for some of those, for some of those community groups. We don't really have an example where, you know, a nonprofit foundation like the Arts Foundation in conjunction with Brenda Knight Events, we don't really have an example where a, a community group like that has, has wanted to undertake something that lines up so much with the, with the city idea and the city goal of having a multicultural event. So that was the, kind of the basis for the, for the recommendation to fund it. The idea is to help defray some of these costs. So that, for example, the, the donation from T-Bid will go to the Arts Foundation. There will be other donations that go to the Art Foundation as well. And at the end of the day, the Arts Foundation will, you know, spend various sums of money. The, the budget is included in the, in the staff report on different providers and vendors to, to make this event happen. There'll be some amount of donations coming in, and so those donations coming in will get funneled back over to the city. Not likely to defray all of the cost, but we wanted to kind of kickstart this event. The Arts Foundation wasn't available on, you know, their current balance sheet to be able to, you know, put all these costs out to begin with. So we needed to kind of front-load it for them, and then, you know, be able to defray that cost, and then donations coming back in will, will come back to the city. And so that was the, the idea behind it. You know, we're always looking to different groups who may have ideas about being able to partner or, or be a part of a nonprofit and bring another idea together. You know, these kind of come one at a time and are usually pretty unique circumstances. So that was kind of the, kind of the basis for the recommendation, and I hope answered your, your question.
Yeah, just, just curious, and maybe this is a question from Miss Knight here. It's, will you also be fundraising to help offset, offset the cost of this $25,000? Are you looking for sponsorships or that? Or, or how are, if you were to sell those things, does, do you defray the funding that, that the city will be providing or, or giving that back? Or will you be using it for something else?
Okay, that's why I had my hand raised, because I wanted to make sure that that was also included and, and mentioned. I am in partnership with the American Canyon Arts Foundation, and we are going into a fundraising mode now. I've got the complete program together, the budget together. And so now the next thing is for me to send out by sponsorship to contact people who are going to help offset this amount. And what we are hoping to do, things go as I have planned, and people will be contacting, is that some portion of this money will be returned back to the city. And, but we had to give you a complete budget and going, moving forward. And my goal is to try to raise that money back. There are going to be several different ways that we can do that. And not just with seeking sponsorships, but there are going to be other fundraising efforts and ideas that we are doing that's going to bring in that, the money back to the city. And that's why I have partnered with, again, the Arts Foundation, because when people make contributions, now they are able to make that donation to a nonprofit organization. I'm just, I, my role is simply acting as the consultant event planner now. And then on the date of the event, I'm the coordinator. I'm coordinating the entire day, making sure everything runs on time, is on schedule, people on the stage. So, so that's what my role is. But partnering with the American Canyon Arts Foundation allows people to make donations to help offset the, the amount that we're asking for tonight.
And the other thing, the other thing I would add, Councilmember Oro, Brenda mentioned some of the food trucks. There'll be some other vendors there selling wares. And so folks who are going to be participating on the commercial side of this will be paying a registration fee, if you will. And so, again, those registration fees will be an example of other offsetting revenue. We, we experienced this when we do the city special event of Fourth of July. We have a certain expenditure, and we do generate some revenue back from some of those vendors. And so something comparable for some of those vendors, in addition to the donations that Brenda speaks of.
Thank you.
Now, I just commented, my past experience was with, in her events, Ladies in Red. These are huge events. There's upwards of 500 women gathered, African-American women, for a conference luncheon. And it's a tremendous luncheon. And it's a tremendous amount of work. I just, I'm excited. We not have, we have not had one of those due to COVID for a while. But I just know by participation of Brenda's experience and capacity to take charge of the very large. Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, I'd like to just also add that Brenda has a whirlwind of connections. And some of the people and the performers who would typically charge large amounts of money have donated a lot of their time as well. So I really, really want to thank Brenda. I want to thank the, the Arts Foundation, City of American Canyon, you know, that includes you too, Cherry. You're out there every week when we're out there talking. So I, I just want to say that, you know, the, the number, the amount sounds like a huge number. But the, the return on investment is even huger. I mean, I've, I've, I'm so excited that I, that I think that the Pennice Bridge is going to be renamed, you know, the Honorable John Lewis Bridge pretty soon. Because I'm gonna put Brendan Knight's name down to be the advocate to make that happen. And I, I truly believe that this country needs that to happen.
I had another comment when you brought that up here. One of the things I do want to mention about this budget and about the program, as Councilmember Washington has mentioned, if I was to go over and do another budget for you, for the speakers and the entertainment and the dancers and everybody that's on this budget, I guarantee you, it would be three times the amount of what you're seeing now. And I have asked a lot of these, because I work with them all the time.
Be a pros, Brenda. Got some technical hangup.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I think I can kind of summarize. She had works with a lot of these speakers and a lot of these vendors. And so I used to say she's getting the Brenda Price with a lot of these folks. So, you know, we don't know that the expenditures really even reach all of these, the levels in the budget. But I, I wanted to put together budgets that we understood, you know, what the framework was. And then, you know, we'll proceed forward.
Good. Do we have any public comment on this matter? Council member for that?
I'm getting, I'm getting word, Mayor, that power just went out over in Lavinia. Maybe also why Brenda, although she lives over in Independence, where she was, yeah.
Power's out.
Yeah. I'm getting, and that, that may be affecting David too, because I realized we just lost David.
We, we lost some people out of the attendees as well.
Oh my. Was this a planned public safety power shut off?
No, not, not sure, Mayor. And yeah, we don't have a form either.
Well, I'm, I'm looking out the window at Walmart and it seems to be dark inside there too.
If, if Councilmember Orol could dial in, oh, I just got something.
Just got a text pop in my, in my neighborhood. It says, David Orol.
Let me, I'm gonna text him the Zoom dial-in number.
Mayor, it looks like we have a fairly substantial outage. And so my recommendation, Bill, is going to be that we take a recess and reconvene back at 7:30. And at that point, we'll know, you know, whether we're going to be able to continue the meeting or not.
Agreed.
You don't actually need to take a vote, Mayor. You can just call the meeting into recess.
Go, go recess till 7:30, see if we get this power issue resolved.
All right, thank you.
I will locate the sign and display that. Oh, Felix has his hand raised. He might have some info. Go ahead, Felix.
Yeah, just received over urgent comms. We have a transformer fire at the 2800 block of Broadway.
Thank you, Felix. We'll, we'll, thank you.
Hey, where recess till 12, 7:30?
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Go.
Right. Two years with the meetings that largely were flawless. And our last Zoom PG&E transformer meltdown.
Hey, hey, Jason, is Pierre making his way over there?
He's here right now.
Recording in progress.
We're all here. So we're going to reconvene. The city clerk's going to reconvene us.
We will reconvene now.
Mayor Garcia, your video is off.
There we are.
Okay, for the record, I'd take role again.
Okay, stake role, please.
Perfect. Okay. And we are going to reconvene the meeting. I'm conducting another roll call. Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Orol.
In the dark in here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Abudhamas is excused. And Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Great. Okay. Before we get started, I'm just gonna let everyone know that they still can access the meeting to participate by dialing in to Zoom. The information is located on the first page of the agenda, which is on our website. The webinar ID is 836-1946-5437 and passcode is 873516.
And what's the phone number, Teresa?
The Zoom dial-in number is 408-638-0968.
That information is all in the packet.
It's all on the first page of the agenda.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Mayor. We had just started to wrap up item number nine related to the Juneteenth Independence Day special event. I don't recall that we'd actually had a motion made.
We did not. We were ready for motion.
Has Brendan Knight been able to rejoin?
She is not able to rejoin us, Mayor, but at this point, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, if that's the case, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution Number 2022, which is next in order, resolution for the city of, the city council, the City of American Canyon approving the $25,000 to the American Canyon Arts Foundation due Juneteenth Independence Day event. Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Motion second?
Thank you. Councilmember Joseph.
Staying.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Joseph?
Staying.
He's, he's abstaining.
I'm sorry.
He's actually refused.
You are refused. Let me, let me mark that. Thank you. Okay. And Councilmember Orol?
Councilmember, you hear us?
He said yes. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, I can. Yes, okay.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the next items, just a quick point of order. If this gets a little weird at home, man, make it into the, I might make it into the council chambers as well. If you guys are having a hard time connecting me, I don't have the strongest connection. But I'll, I'll make that.
Are you, are you able to participate by phone as you travel over here?
I think I can. Yeah, we'll see. But I'm gonna try to make it here for a little bit. Make sure my family's all settled in. We did a run around for flashlights in the house.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
That's what's preparing for those public safety power shots.
Yeah. I'm just curious, are you guys in the chambers or individual offices?
Individual offices.
Okay. All right, thanks.
It was brought to my attention that the individual called in for public comment who was not able to connect, now connect. Do I have that correct?
That is correct.
Well, I will allow this.
Okay, so, let's see. Then, so Mayor Garcia, you wanted to reopen public comment?
Public comment for this individual, yes.
Okay. And, okay. I have David Gilbreath to make public comments. Go ahead, David. You are muted.
Did it, I hope. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, as you know, my name's David Gilbert. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to make a couple of comments and stay within your, as I understand it, three-minute limit. Also want to thank your staff, the clerk, the assistant clerk, they were very helpful as I struggled to get here. The, the purpose of my comments is to request support from the city council and your fire district for the Green Island property application before Napa LAFCO. We, we would like to get your support. I have talked with the staff member at LAFCO and they asked me to reach out to you and get your comments. And I hope it will be support. The piece of property, I think, as you all know, and I think you've read the comments, can't be utilized for anything else. It's basically salty dirt clods. You've been serving it forever. It's a logical island fill-in piece. And it never was served by Napa County. The letter of support is not technically required by state law, which we are utilizing. But it's highly beneficial. And my informal understanding is that the city council would like to see this project go forward. And I know that there has, there have been conversations in the past. And so at this time, just to clarify it, I am hopeful with my request that you'll consider it and, both by your fire board, and help move it forward. We know that from knowledgeable people, I have not done the calculation, but we know from knowledgeable people that the real property tax revenue for every year, it doesn't move forward with the development that you might have proven your sole discretion, means that the city doesn't get hundreds of thousands of dollars. One estimate is more than a million dollars of tax revenue. The county would get the same. And your fire district would get 5% of whatever these monies turn out to be. Just makes sense to us. I have been involved, as some of you know, in the past, in the assisting in the formation of the City of American Canyon. I feel really as a, as a member of the community, we've tried to do our best. And I, I think this project is very meritorious. And we would hope that you take a look at it. I think you applied. I know that you applied in 2018. I'm not sure technically, but your city attorney may know. I don't think it requires a vote, but I obviously defer to your city attorney to have staff write simple letters, because you in fact already applied in 2018. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate it. And I hope to see all of you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye.
Okay. I don't think we have any other comment, do we, at this point?
I have no other hands raised. No, I have no other hands raised for public comment.
I will close public comment. Item's not on the agenda. Thank you. Moving forward with our business. Right aside. Item 10, potential treatment process improvements at water reclamation facility.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Trace is going to bring over Felix Hernandez, our maintenance and utilities director, as well as a couple of consultants, Louise and Robbie from the NG Company. We're gonna give a couple of presentations about sustainability and resiliency program, and then also some opportunities at our water reclamation facilities. Felix and the team from NG, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager Holly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening, staff and members of the public tenure. We have a presentation for council. NG Services Incorporated, we are currently wrapping up the citywide sustainability resiliency project, which one of the presentations will be an update on that. And then we will go to a second presentation where staff and the NG team have identified potential treatment process improvements at the water reclamation facility, where that would allow additional city industrial users to connect to the, to the wastewater treatment system. And we would be able to treat that higher strength waste. I'm gonna have with me tonight Louise Boulave, Robbie Baskar, and Kelly Ferguson from the NG team. So with that, I will share my screen and we'll get into this presentation. Wait for this to... All right. So the, the energy and sustainability progress update, the phase one is what we're calling it. And here's the presentation. So now we'll turn it over to presumably Louise.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Hello. Good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor Garcia and City Council, it's great to see everyone once more. Thank you for your time tonight. I look forward to sharing some data on the energy program as all measures were installed last year. I'll quickly recap the goals, the implementation status. Thank you, Felix. The solar production and what the impact to date has been. So to refresh your memory, the city leaned into the sustainability project at the peak of the pandemic in 2020. And together, we looked at energy and resiliency improvements at our number of facilities, which seems actually very appropriate to give an update tonight, given the circumstances. And the goals, the goals back then and that are still relevant today, first and foremost, to reduce the city's carbon emissions and utility bills, replaced aged equipment, so a lot of HVAC units, LED lighting retrofits, et cetera, and provide emergency backup at critical city-owned sites. So the city obtained competitive financing from the market back then at really attractive interest rates. It leveraged a $600,000 CAL OES grants and available incentives for the battery storage and EV charging, EV charging infrastructure. If you go to the next slide, these were the, essentially, the final measures are bulleted here. So solar at the reclamation facility, the treatment plant, the public safety building, I don't think any of this is, is new to you all. Store energy storage at the reclamation facility, emergency generators across four sites, EV charging stations that you now see and use outside of City Hall. And along with other measures, HVAC upgrades, thermostat replacements, LED lighting. And we also supported community initiatives and outreach activities last year. And today, our team is currently working in securing wastewater interns for the city. We're also working with Parks and Rec in partnership with the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation on earth the activities that are coming up this April, just next month. So exciting projects there. For the implementation... For the implementation, this may look familiar to you. So for each measure, basically, everything's installed. We're waiting on a couple of final pieces that are mainly permitting, you know, delays with, with some of these systems. For the battery storage, we're waiting on final equipment from PG&E arriving this April. Then the system will be turned on. The generator at the treatment plant is expected in July. Just as a reminder, the purchase was approved by council in December. So just with supply chain delays, the soonest we could get it out here is in July. But it's actually already been permitted, which is great. So that hopefully will get, you know, online pretty soon, once it's, once it arrives in July. And then the one at City Hall, we're expecting permit any day now. We had to meet a certain distance, because City Hall is a certain distance from the school. Required public notice, which, which, you know, extended the timeline a little bit, but we're, we're looking, we're looking good otherwise. The next few slides will just highlight the solar production data. So before I jump into that, this is just a brief outline of what our commissioning process looks like. So I wish it was as easy as saying, you know, we'll just turn the solar on and, you know, everything will work and it'll be just great and dandy. There's always a period of adjustment, once the systems go live. Think of, you know, buying a new guitar and instrument and tuning it for the first time. It doesn't sound so nice to begin with, and then kind of fix the issue. So you'll see that narrative play out in some of the graphs on the next slides. But essentially, once, sorry Felix, just before you go there.
My apologies.
No, no worries, once the city receives, or the solar systems receive what we call PTO, permission to operate from PG&E, that's when the solar savings begin to accrue. And so you'll, you've already started seeing that on your utility bills as of last year. There's always a period of troubleshooting to adjust for technical issues and data reconciliation, where, you know, NG comes back in the field to make sure the adjustments made are working. And then once all the measures are installed and we wrapped up completion, construction, we reach final completion, and that's when the project closes out, and then our production guarantee actually kicks in. So if you go to the next slide now Felix, the public safety building kind of charts this. So the, the bright baby blue color is the actual production that the solar saw since it started generating. And so you'll see that in July, because of construction, the performance wasn't great, we went back out there. We actually washed the panels in October. And then right after that, we saw an uptick in production. And so now we're kind of looking in, in good shape and, you know, exceeding what was actually expected with the production data. For the next site, the water treatment plant, the story is a bit similar. So the panels were washed, now performance is up. And just for perspective, NG projects typically perform at over 105%, 105% of their stated outputs. So we're, we're confident that this trend will, you know, will continue well into, into this year. And then the last site actually received PTO fairly late last year. And so you only have three months of data right now. Panels were washed in October, and then there was actually a data logging issue, where despite that the systems were actually working and producing, the production wasn't being tracked. So it doesn't reflect on the system. It took a while to resolve these issues, by December, they were resolved. And so by January, we received an accurate production being reflected. So we're going to continue to keep track of this, obviously, and we, you know, be happy to present whenever council would like to receive these updates, especially once we enter into the performance guarantee phase of things.
Louise, I want to touch on that a little bit more, the performance guarantee phase for council. So with the savings that we're seeing now, are, they're, they're in addition to, they're in addition to what was presented with the original project in the performer. So once we reach the, the, kind of the, the start date, really the start date of the guarantee, we, we should see, what we see closer on this right-hand side in January, where the production is going to match, match the projected. So all of this, these savings is realized during the startup process, and, and it's just extra from what we had presented previously in the performer for this project.
Yep. Thank you Felix. So lastly, the city has access to the EV stations and how they're actually being utilized. So there's a dashboard available, which has different charting, different data items. And so you can essentially see, right now, there's actually three unique drivers, we call them, but three cars that are consistently charging at City Hall, I would assume, city employees. And this is for the last 30 days, but it's an interesting tool. Right now, the, the, the charging stations are fear charge for city staff and community. If the city decides to do a paid service, that's something that can also be entertained as well. But yeah, that, that's what I'll share for that.
I have something to add on this one here, Louise, for council and the public. Is currently, the charging stations are, they're, as, they're, they're active. I mean, you know, folks can come in, they see them, they can use them. But there is a setting within, within the program that allows us to identify them on, say, Google Maps. So during startup, when we first start up, we, we had them not identifiable on Google Maps, right? Or, or in these smartphones, where we're changing that setting. So now if someone says, hey, what's my closest charging station? Our stations will be identified as one of those points. So what I would anticipate happening is that this unique drivers, where we have three currently, we would see that that would start to trend upward, and the, the usage would trend upward as well. Alright, I'm going to move to the next slide.
Yeah, and I think this is the last one. So just very briefly, you know, program impact to date since the solar was turned on, the lighting, you know, LED lights were retrofitted, that's a bulk of the savings. We, we, the city has saved a little over $120,000. And we look forward to seeing that number continue to accrue, especially during the summer months of, of this year. So happy to answer any questions here, I think that's the last one Felix, unless I'm mistaken, but.
I think the next one might just be questions.
Yeah. Questions, and before we transition to our next topic.
Okay, I will stop share, I'm going to go on to our next part two of this presentation.
I think it looks like Pierre Washington has a question, Councilmember Washington.
Yeah, thanks Louise for that, for that presentation. Real quick on the, on the charging stations. Isiling fees incorporated into those stations, for instance, what I, what I mean by isiling fee? A person comes there charged for a day, all the way max charged, maybe the car there. Do, do we have that factored in?
I didn't quite get isiling fees.
I'm going to go back to that slide Louise.
The individuals that charge, that's a great question, I'm, I'm not sure. Let me look into that, I can get back to you, unless Kelly or Robbie may know, but that's a level I'm not sure, so I can, happy to, to get that information to you.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Kind of bouncing off of Councilmember Washington. I guess for me, the question is, do our charging stations, or whatever the software that runs them, does it have that kind of flexibility in terms of billing? I mean, right now, I know it's free, but if we decided for whatever reason we wanted to activate, you know, a charge, how easy is that to do, and, and also how easy is it to have that idling charge if we decided to do that as well? Or to adjust the, the rate per kilowatt?
So the, the software is, is, has that capability. So that would be an, an easy transition to do that. There is most likely a small fee to pay for that service, or additional sort of component to the software. Because at this point, it wasn't, it wasn't installed in that, to include, to include that. So it is, it is something that we could easily do, and we, we have, you know, our whole old team that can support, that works very closely with, with the vendor here. And we've set up this type of structure for other clients. So if the city wants to do that, it's something that we can bring back and, and share a little bit more what the parameters and costs may look like. It doesn't cost much, is, 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 you know, my, my take, it's not, it's not a huge cost difference.
Great, thank you. Question, if you go back to the, like, the water treatment plant, you have a projected, some understanding, this is projected, this is what's, this potentially amount of electricity from solar? Versus actual, I'm trying to understand these two.
Yeah, so the, the blue, dark blue, they're both blue. The dark blue one is what we expect the solar production to reach at any given month. And, you know, the, the reason why it sort of trends downwards is because of the summer months, going into winter, there's less, there's less available sun, and so you're, you're, you know, we're projecting less solar production during those winter months. The baby blue is what was actually produced since the system went live, so the actual system at the treatment plant. And so it went live, and there was a little bit of a ramp-up period as we're sort of optimizing and checking inverters and make sure everything works well. We also included panel washing, there's some construction, you know, going on during that time. And so, you know, that, that makes a big difference. And so that's why you see sort of the spike, where the, the baby blue, you know, is actually traded higher than, than dark blue, the projected, in November and, and December and January.
I would think that would suggest to homeowners who have panels on their roofs, that they need to take care of washing them as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happens, is there any excess electricity generated, what do we do with that?
There is no excess for these ones at this point. And we try, when we design these, to design them actually, so that you actually don't have excess electricity. It's not as economical to do that, so that's not the case here.
And if we're not generating enough electricity, what does it, ties into PG&E? Backup?
Well, all the electricity you're producing right now, you're using it. But we are installing emergency generators at four sites. There is the battery storage at the reclamation facility that, once it turns on, it'll actually help provide more, more savings to, to the reclamation facility, help, you know, reduce demand charges.
Louise, I'll add to that is, is for, for Mayor Garcia is, we, we don't currently produce the total amount used. So we do, we do produce, if you see in November to summer, January, we're producing the actuals greater than projected. But we still are on PG&E, or in some cases, it would be MCE. And for instance, I know I was speaking with the water systems manager, and he was looking at the PG&E or MCE bills, I think it's to come through PG&E. And, and what he noted was that it was, was half of what it normally was, because of the solar. And we'd be happy to, to address that at a later time, where we can come back and, and show council your, your, the hard savings, right?
Yeah, I think we'd be very interested in the, in the savings on that.
Yeah, even, even though this, I will, will say this, Mr. Mayor, is that the, the data that's presented that tonight is, is based on information that we did receive from, from PG&E. And through our team, we got over to NG and we incorporated it in here. So those savings are realized here, but if someone just wanted to take a look at that bill, I mean, we'd be happy to provide it.
I'm really excited for this, I think it's going to be certainly the way for the future, we all know that. And I think certainly, I'm just an echo like, and actually for atmospheric changes. Yeah, I think, you know, carbon reduction is out here, very good, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Give me another component. Okay, there we go.
Yeah, to your, to your point, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, to emphasize this here, is that, that's exactly what you were speaking to. So if we had any other questions, we'll go, move on to the second part.
Let's move on to the second part.
Excellent. Alright. So, there. Now, this. Okay. So now we have this, the second part is Phase Two Master Planning and Supporting Industrial Economic Growth across the City of American Canyon. And again, I, I think at this point, Louise is, I'm not sure you're still the point, the point on this one, it may be Robbie.
I wish I was as much of a subject matter expert as Robbie, but I can, I can quickly introduce him, and he can kick us off here. If it's for you Felix, but some of you may, may remember Robbie, because we gave a brief, or actually Felix gave an update on the corporate relocation last fall, and, and we were here to answer questions. But Robbie Bascar is, is on the line, and he's our wastewater subject matter expert. And, you know, has been working with city staff on developing this proposal. He comes with tremendous, great background in wastewater, and actually is currently in the region, working on a project with West County, that's pretty significant. So there's, there's some nice tie-in here with American Canyon. And, you know, with that Robbie, I'll, I'll let you sort of kick it off here, and I'll chime in as, as much as I can. But you're, you're definitely the, the one who knows most of this wastewater language.
Sure.
So. Sure, thank you Louise, thank you Mayor Garcia and City Council and Felix.
Go ahead.
So, the, you know, wastewater plants are now undergoing a shift in terms of how they're perceived. A large number of them have been renamed to Water Quality and Resource Recovery Facilities. And there's a good reason for that, because they are, we're, we're tapping into what's, what has historically been regarded as waste product. And we're using that to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, generate electricity, and reduce costs for industrial users. So it's a win-win situation for everybody, what we call a triple bottom line, economic, environmental, and social benefits. So if you'd like to go to the first slide, Felix. So the city, we're going to talk about the city goals, the possibilities for treatment process upgrades and energy savings across both your wastewater and the water treatment plant, but mostly focused on wastewater. We have a very high-level budgetary performer. This is before we have actually done any detailed engineering or obtained any price quotations. This is just based on our historical experience with this kind of work. Then we'll talk about the program benefits and the next steps. Let's go to the next slide. So the city goals, basically, there are a number of industrial users, mostly wineries, bottling facilities, and other people that are generating what's called high-strength waste in the industry. And that is waste that's anywhere from 10 to 100 times more concentrated than domestic wastewater. And so normally, these folks have to hold and haul, which is to put the, the waste into trucks and haul it to facilities that are equipped to handle it, or they have to treat it on-site. Those are the only two options available, both of which are expensive and hauling trucks filled with, with wastewater to several counties away is also, as you may know, has significant impact to greenhouse gases. So we will reduce the greenhouse gas reductions and reach net zero by 2030. By net zero, I mean a wastewater facility that produces as much electricity as it uses. Wastewater contains 10 times the amount of energy needed to treat it. And historically, technology and capital cost limitations have prevented wastewater plants from achieving that. So we address the climate change emergency by reducing both methane going into the atmosphere and carbon dioxide from the emissions of the trucks. So we address the climate change emergency by reducing both methane going into the atmosphere and carbon dioxide from the emissions of the trucks. And finally, and last but not least, we're going to upgrade and expand capacity at both the water reclamation facility and the the water treatment plant, improving the quality of reused water, produce new revenue streams from treated Title 22 water and reasonable charges for high strength waste. We have a database on what cities across the country are charging their significant industrial users. And of course, we have to give them a good a better deal than what they're having right now. So this this actually is generates revenue for the city and has is less expensive for the industrial users. Finally, we have resilience for the water infrastructure, security in water resources, increasing water plant production and not having to rely so much on short term supplies of water from the Laido, for instance, and reduce energy and operational costs. So let's go to the next slide. The water reclamation facility. This is a picture of the existing membrane treatment train. And it was a good idea when it was first installed, but now it has it's reaching its capacity limits and we'll talk about that a little more. So this is what the system looks like right now. Headworks, bar screens, micro screen, membrane train and the secondary clarifier. And then water is released to disinfection. And then there's a biosolids treatment process. Felix warned me not to get into weeds, so I'm not going to do that. We have capacity constraints. We can treat all the water we'd like to treat. And we certainly cannot treat the industrial wastes, even though there's a pipeline, you know, with extraordinary foresight. Someone thought to put a separate pipe for the industrial waste. And as you will find out later on, that saves the city tens of millions of dollars in constructing, in not having to construct that pipeline. There's compliance pressure to meet Senate Bill 1383. As you all may know, starting next year, the state of California is going to prohibit the introduction of organic wastes into landfills. So all of those organic waste, the food waste, the high strength waste, wineries, all of that has to go somewhere. So we will develop a process to treat that at the wastewater plant. And then you have the loss of reused water revenue, which, you know, it's not clean enough for Napa, it's not clean enough for X, Y and Z. And we'll fix all of that, you know, it's that's a relatively easy problem to solve. And then finally, the available standby generation. You will have a microgrid with islanding capability, which means you can run the water reclamation facility completely independently of the PG&E grid. So let's go to the next slide. So the stated opportunities are pretty significant. If we produce Title 22 water, we get up to $75 an acre foot credit credited back to us, which is great. And there are a number of significant industrial users. I visited with all of these folks, Trincherio Family Estates, Infinity Bottling, Napa Recycling. And they're all listed over here. Right now, they're all either holding and hauling or they are treating it on site. Most of them are holding and hauling. They're paying anywhere from $100,000 to several hundred thousand dollars a year each. And there's at least 15 of them. And I personally and along with Uriurisovich at the water at the wastewater plant and Felix, we personally interviewed at least 10 of them and they were all unanimous in supporting this 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 kind of effort. So what we will do is to is we already have a line coming in for the for the industrial discharge. And we will treat both the industrial and the domestic waste in different streams. And we're going to add the 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 key is that we're going to add anaerobic digestion, which produces methane, you know, which is an actual process. But it also keeps it from decomposing in the landfill. So the organic waste now, instead of generating methane in the landfill, is going to generate methane in a digester where it can be captured and put to a number of beneficial uses. Among those uses are cogeneration, you can produce electricity, you can dry the sludge to produce a fertilizer, which is a class A biosolid. You can purify it and inject it back into the pipeline and it's called renewable natural gas RNG. Right now, the price of renewable natural gas is 15 times the price of of fossil fuel natural gas. So that's a potential revenue source for the city. And then, of course, as I said earlier, you can make you can thermally dry the solids. So there's a number of things you can do with the solids. Once you have the capability, the basic capability to create high strength wastes with anaerobic digestion. I'd like to add that anaerobic digestion is actually one of the oldest treatment processes sees has been around for 150 years. And in the 70s, when energy was cheap and controls were expensive, it fell out of favor, but now the situation is exactly the opposite. So let's go to the next slide.
Yeah, sorry about that. An update from field staff on this power outage. Move right along.
Okay, so again, this is this might seem to be a lot of information, but I tried to keep it as simple as I possibly could. The this is a simplified view of the proposed process. We'll keep a lot of the existing equipment, but we will add another micro screen. We will, you know, we'll take the sludge that's being produced right now, we'll blend it with the high strength waste that comes in. And we will go to the two digesters, then the gas will be purified and it'll 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 generate get it'll generate electricity. And then the de-watered sludge is going to go to a thermal dryer and produce class A biosolids. That's the tentative plan right now. And it could change, of course, in certain elements of it and certain pieces of equipment, which we will define in more with more clarity as we get further into the process. Let's go to the next slide. So what are the benefits? Why are we doing this? So there's an estimated 51 million in net project benefits resulting from the new Title 22 water revenue stream and the high strength waste revenue stream, as well as energy production, resiliency and operational savings. We'll expand the plant capacity for housing development and industrial growth. We will comply with California's, you know, carbon reduction goals, including Senate Bill 1383. There's about an 80 to 90% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions as a result of diverting organics from landfill. At West County Wastewater District, which is a $63 million project we're we're doing right now. We we documented a 93% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from going from their existing process to our proposed process, which is actually very similar to what we're proposing here. More efficient and safer plant operation. And of course, when working with with companies such as us, you have a turnkey solution. You don't have to manage multiple projects. You don't have to deal with putting out RFPs for bids and design for each of these projects individually. You can you have a seamless integration with your corporate relocation. And of course, you have micro grids for resilience for all of your critical facilities. And then, you know, we have reduced energy and operational costs. So let's go to the next slide, Felix. So here's a budgetary performer. The 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 total cost altogether is about $33 million. It generates, you know, altogether with total savings and revenue in the first year, about 1.9 million. And then, of course, that escalates with escalating operating costs, revenues and energy, giving us an overall net benefit at the end of the the project cycle, the 30 year lifespan of $51 million. And the assumptions are listed here on the left side, utility escalation is 4.5%. That's actually quite conservative. PG&E announced numbers significantly higher than that from year over year from last year. The raw water cost is $75 an acre foot. We'll get at least that much if you credit the 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 California system with Title 22 water. The water rate escalation is 5%. Again, that's documented based based on the California Public Utilities Commission. So all of these these assumptions are set forth on the left side. The project will start paying for itself in the first year. And, you know, it'll yield the benefits that have that have stated that have set forth in previous slides. Let's go to the next slide. So the timeline, starting from start to finish, we're right now at the opportunity assessment stage. We'll we'll put in a program development agreement. Then we will take 20 months or so to engineer and build and commission the the project. And we'll realize the benefits after that. Louise, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I thank you, Ravi. I I think I defer to Felix on on next steps and where we are here. But basically, the the dark blue, as Ravi mentioned, is where we're at right now. And so the next step is, since all of this is sort of high 30 foot thousand level view, is to secure resources, engineers to actually develop this project. And so that would be the next step for us so that we can actually get into the weeds a little bit further and get from pricing and consensus on the final measures for for this project. So.
Yeah, thank you, Louise and Ravi. Yeah, well, something here is that a couple of things I want to point out is that the assumptions that are made will will be refined as we move forward. If if you recall from the, or recall the Phase One, our Energy Resiliency Project, as we have the pro forma, it does have some some iterations as we move along. The next phase would be entering into a contract where where the NG team can begin engineering. The council will have have an off ramp, if you will. So the contract will essentially be a fee and that fee will be will not be paid unless the city decides to take that off ramp and say, hey, this is not going to pencil out for us. And we would pay that fee, which essentially covers all the work done up to that point, all the engineering and and estimates and things of that nature. If if council and the city decide that, hey, we're going to go ahead and move forward with this project, that fee is incorporated into the the financing phase of things. Another thing that I want to point out is that I think is important to note is that in this project, we would also take that recycled water. So if you're familiar with our recycled water, we do have a pretty robust program. It's it's only getting getting larger and ramping up, becoming more more dynamic. But in that, we would be able to improve the water quality of recycled water. So currently, we do have some high solids, high dissolved solids, salts in that recycled water. And this project would also address that and we'd be turning out very high quality recycled water, essentially allowing unrestricted reuse. It isn't it is high quality now, but we're going to be removing those solids, those those total dissolved solids, which is a very important part of reuse. So I believe we have questions. See, Councilmember Joseph, stand up.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And as some of you know, this has been an exciting project for me. Budgets and public works are the two exciting things to me. And this is kind of like got both of them. I I a few questions about some of the weeds. It looks like the new process that you're envisioning, does that essentially mean that we'd be pulling the membranes out of the system and using a a digester, an activated sludge or something? Is 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 that what?
Okay. And no, Commissioner Joseph, we will keep the the membrane trains in place. In fact, we may even add another membrane train. But all wastewater treatment processes produce sludge. And so we will we will decompose that sludge in the digesters to produce biogas. And we'll actually blend the the activated sludge that comes off of the the membranes with the high strength waste. And 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 we call that digester feed. And we'll come up with the optimal mixture to feed the digesters to produce the maximum amount of gas.
For for that, Councilmember Joseph is is currently the current process and that that's part of the greenhouse gas production. It's currently the the solids, the waste solids or sludge going to a a screw press where we press out as much water as we can, dries it out as much as possible and then goes into a dumpster and goes to landfill. So it's part it's part of the the Senate bill that that Ravi had mentioned earlier is removing those solids from landfill where we would essentially use those solids to create biogas.
Next question is, is this something that Mazetta could use? Because they currently have their their three holding ponds. And would it be economically appealing to them to get rid of the ponds and use our system? Or are they better off the way they're at?
So yeah, I believe Mazetta is actually treating their high strength waste on site. And then they're sending us water that has high salinity. And they've talked about potentially putting in a reverse osmosis facility on site to remove the salinity. I think we can take their high strength waste. They wouldn't necessarily have to treat it on site. The salinity is something we'll have to, we can decide on whether we can remove it on their facility or on ours. You know, I'd like, of course, to make it easy for the SIUs and do all of the work because then we have control over the quality of of treatment and the quality of water that we put up. But of course, the extent to which we do the treatment versus the the SIUs doing it themselves depends on on the capital budget and and what's in those waste streams.
Well, good, because, all right, because they have always been a a big business, you know, not just a industrial user of our system, but also a a brand name and and a great employer and so on. So we want to make sure they're happy. Now let's move to the financial end of it. So you're envisioning that we would have a new industrial surcharge of some sort for the high strength users.
Correct.
That's the new revenue stream, the million plus a year?
Yes.
Okay.
And at first I was skeptical that there were enough industrial users to make up that shortfall, to 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 produce that revenue. But after talking to them and and looking at their volumes, I'm I'm much, I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to close that loop.
And then then the next question is, would we have enough capacity to try to attract a few businesses? Because right now, we have a lot of wine and beverage and food facilities. And it would be nice to be in a position to handle their waste so that we could actually begin attracting other businesses and become kind of an industrial or an industrial cluster around those areas and begin to have a brand influence. Do you envision that is, is it, is there enough capacity to handle it or is that a different story?
Yeah, so I would like to build enough capacity. I typically like to oversize facilities by 25%. If you oversize them larger than that, they become inefficient. But if you size them to be just right, then you haven't planned for some some growth. Regionally, Napa Sanitation District, for example, is turning away customers because they don't have enough capacity. And, you know, we don't want to be in that in that position.
And yet, you know, whoever's going to Napa San or whatever customer that has to haul might want to just take a short drive instead of going into into the East Bay. So that.
Hey, exactly, yeah.
Well, the the last comment is on the pro forma. I see that you've got a water utility or our water rate has a rate escalation of 5.12% a year. Historically, our wastewater rate has been only 3% a year. And so I guess my question is, that may be an utility average, but that hasn't been ours. What happens if you're using a 3% escalation? Does what does that do to our numbers?
It doesn't. It it mostly affects the 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 money you get for the Title 22 water, which, as you can see, is a small part of the of the revenue stream. And again, the water rates that I'm I'm referring to aren't the the wastewater rates, it's the the water supply rates. That, yeah, and and that has been affected by drought and and other factors. So that's that's the 5.12%.
Okay. Well, like I said, overall, I Okay, uh well, like I said, overall, I would love to see this happen. Uh I've I've talked about the importance of of being able to addr- address our industrial discharge because we have an an industrial park, you know, they are uh benefiting them. Or whatever we can do to help them will help them grow and and we get our share in taxes down the road. So I'm very excited about it. Obviously, the environmental impacts are exciting. So if this pencils, I'm on board. We'll leave it with that. And uh I have to brag for a second. I was around when we built the wastewater plant. A- and yes, the idea of having dual trains made sense because you had the industrial base right there, you had everybody else, and the plant was built literally adjacent to the industrial plant. It it was kind of a no brainer. So I'll take credit for the visionary element, but it was essentially a no brainer. It just made sense the way it laid itself out.
It it literally had the cost of of this kind of undertaking and made it possible where in other places it wasn't possible because they didn't have the collection systems infrastructure to handle the two waste streams.
We're just lucky the way we we grew.
Yep.
But again, thank you for your presentation.
Uh Councilmember Joseph, to to your point is now now that we're we are at this uh we're kind of like this thirty thousand foot level. Um the next, part of the next phase is is now we start assembling the team, right? And obviously, our our finance director, Lincoln Bogart, will be part of that team. Where he'll be working with the NG team on this pro forma and to be able to really um needle down on some of these numbers here.
For me, this uh really looks uh forward to uh a new process. This would be very beneficial to us to uh Councilmember Joseph's point on uh uh future expansion. And right sizing a facility, you know, the uh, I don't know if the gentleman heard the probably comment from Mr. Galverson, but now there's in becoming part of the city at some point, the city will go in the industrial area. So being able to have enough of a for- forward uh look at it to say, uh, you know, what are the potentials for this game? Actually, the next uh agenda item also really, this reservoir is our access to state water project water. And how that will connect with our economic goals. Hope you have more water coming in. Likely, you're going to have more uh discharge. And we need to plan accordingly with uh concerns be the a lot, a lot of the very well intentioned uh legislation passed uh speaks to a goal of uh what we want outcomes to look like. I don't know that it, for me, it's sufficiently addressed how we get there. You know, we have regulations on, well, like right now, uh composting uh uh residential uh waste product. So kitchen waste. How do we get rid of that? Well, we're still haven't figured that one out, not all of us. And uh it looks like it's going to be an increased rate to homeowners and um uh it seems like, you know, a very high level uh discussion with it. But on the practical sense, uh what's the impact of this making it so it works for communities? Really appreciate the work you're doing. Early in my uh uh career in college, I worked at a laboratory to test wastewater. So of course, I was back then, it was all tested, P twenty dishes. So didn't have this level of sophistication. Uh but I really can have an appreciation for uh the work done. And uh some understanding of uh direction it's going. And that's that's to be remarkable. Appreciate the work you're doing. Any other uh council comment? If not, uh we have public comment on this matter?
From you, Teresa.
Sorry. Uh Mayor Garcia, we had two written comments, Ben Beasley and Miguel Ortega. And I have no hands raised at this time.
Well, this, I see there's no uh council action, it's just uh information.
And it is, it is, Mayor, I just want to note the two public commenters were actually commenting kind of on behalf of one of our industrial users or potential industrial users, Barry Calvo.
They were both um employees of Barry Calvo. In favor.
Yes, I I think I saw one of those two comments. Uh and and I think the the presentation listed a number of other of our other industrial users. So it it looks like uh it it's the favorable thing to do with our customer. And uh I don't, I know it's just a receive and file presentation, but like I said, if we can make it pencil, uh I certainly would love to see us move forward with it.
Yeah, I think, you know, being on the uh cutting edge of uh the new technology and given uh where our uh city's position with the potential for growth, I mean, we have the, we have the space to build. And certainly, uh uh what opportunities we want to do to to attract industries here uh for the economic growth of the city and better around the families with employment opportunities, so. Very good. Uh well, it's not, it's a public comment. Hello, somebody else? All right. So uh was that, it's a motion to receive and file?
That's correct, Mayor. That's all we have for this evening. Wanted to thank the team from NG and Felix and Uri and everybody else at the Water Reclamation and Collections that have been helping out with this. More to come.
More to come. Good, thank you. Keep it coming.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Felix can stay on, he's got the next item too.
There we go, back to back. We have a motion to receive and file.
Also move.
Motion second, roll call please.
I I don't think we need a motion to receive and file. I mean, I, we can, but I'm sorry, who? I wasn't prepared for that. I'm sorry, who was the?
Yes, I made the motion uh and David Oro seconded.
Thank you. Uh okay, um Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on now to our next item, which is sites reservoir project.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'll turn it over to Felix. Uh but exciting news about this project moving forward.
Thank you, Senator Holly. Uh again, uh welcome, everyone. Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utility Director. Um Sites Reservoir Amendment Three. With Sites Reservoir, um so this project, for those of you that don't know, and heck, I've I've gotten up to speed on it since I've been in American Canyon, but it's back to the seventies, uh the Department of Water Resources and the Bureau of Reclamation. Um I've kind of kicked this thing around, did some studies on it, it never got past the conceptual phase. Um we fast forward forty years um from that point, and and there were a group of agencies that that um had some renewed renewed interest in this. At that point, um the Sites Reservoir JPA was created, um is now the lead on this particular project. Um the Sites project, uh it's uh entails constructing a one point five million acre foot surface water storage reservoir. It it is a off stream reservoir, meaning that it it doesn't require damming of the Sacramento River or the Delta or any of that. Um it would be using uh diverting water during during the winter time when we have really high flows. Water that would normally just go out and flow into the ocean would divert that water um into the Sites Reservoir. And um there there still will be um uh a dam created. And it's it's roughly, this location is right around the Maxwell area in north of us. As that, as that happens, then um the the water stored, that water is then conveyed to to um the users. In this case, it would be the city, and it's conveyed using the existing infrastructure. The Sacramento River, the Delta, North Bay Aqueduct essentially continues to use that. The city currently participates, um their particip- participation is at the four thousand acre foot per year um level. And that's not expected to vary year to year. Um whereas the state water project water will vary year to year, and it historically has. Um as an example, as comparing the the two sources of water, currently, the city contracts to receive up to five thousand two hundred acre feet per year um from the state water project. But it, the reliability of that water averages about sixty two percent, that's that's about normal. Um which equates to roughly thirty two hundred acre feet per year. Where um the Sites Reservoir would be four thousand acre feet per year um being requested by the city. And that's what what um staff is requesting, essentially doubles that shortfall. So um we we see this as being a more reliable source. The participation rate for the um city is is um the project is currently in phase two, roughly four thousand, pardon me, four hundred dollars per acre foot. That allows us to continue through this phase through uh phase two. And then um what it what it amounts to is roughly one point six million over the next three years. And that's regardless of this reservoir is built or not. Um currently, the project is is uh in a pay-go, pay-as-you-go um format until um funding comes through. Which uh important to note that there there have been um some significant funding sources through the state. Um through the WIN Act funding, um that covered environmental studies, documentation, project engineering and design, things of that nature. That's the phase two um piece. During phase one, it was kind of the preliminary stuff, the um environmental analysis, investigating the permitting requirements and initial initial engineering. But like I said, there is uh funding applications submitted from the Sites Authority. Um the Water System Improvement Program, there's an application been submitted. Um it's resulted in over eight hundred million being designated for the project. And there's an additional roughly four hundred and forty million um from the Department of Agriculture. So um it's, it's has um some wide support. Again, uh phase one, we're in the phase two approach where there's a substantial amount of work that needs to be done. Um what this amendment is saying is that we do um, we do want to continue participation. We um are part of the the um the JPA. And um this project is anticipated to be construction again twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And then we get into phase three. So that's that, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of the Sites project. Again, want to emphasize that the participation rate for the remainder of phase two is four hundred dollars per acre foot, which is one point six million over the next three years. Um without, I'll take questions.
Just real quickly, Felix, the only thing I wanted to add on on to this uh phase three, the the construction phase, like you mentioned, uh commencing twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. That next phase, the cost to participate in that phase is anticipated to be part of an overall debt service package. So um beyond the funding, the federal and state funding um that will serve as a grants and things like that to kind of come off the top. The the rest of the project would be financed by the participants. So the pay as you go model would go away. Uh a large bond issuance done by the um by the Sites Authority JPA for everybody. We wouldn't, everybody do our own bond issuances, the the large JPA would do its own uh debt issuance. Uh and then the cost for construction would be part of the rate that we pay for the water when it gets delivered. So much like the state water project I did back in the sixties and seventies when the state constructed all that infrastructure. We pay that debt service back uh each month when we use water from the state water project. So the model conceptually is um is the same with with Sites Reservoir. So we would no longer have the pay as you go model in in construction phase three. Just wanted to time and add that, Felix, that was awesome.
Yeah, you know, thank you, Senator Holly. Also, an important note is that the pay as you go approach in this phase two, it does provide the city with an off ramp. So um we 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 have an off ramp, if we say, you know what, this is, it's not going to work out for us too expensive, whatever it may be. But I mean, at that point, the city has the ability to sell its stake. Um and currently, th- there are, there are um some folks that are trying to get get in. Uh there's there, there's essentially, if you just think of it like like a a pizza, right? And there's only so many slices that go around. Somebody says, yeah, I'm out. And the next person says, hey, I want that slice. So um and really, those slices are a a quantity of storage in this reservoir. So there are some folks that have expressed interest in that they're kind of um in a holding pattern. If people decide to drop off, for instance, if the city decided to say, hey, we're going to take this off ramp, okay, we'll sell our steak.
I think that was uh what attracted all of us to this one was uh uh more uh reliability on water supply, uh better quality water with it. Uh a couple of pieces, I think I may have mentioned it at the previous council meeting. Got one presentation I went to that said, uh, you know, they're moving our intake from uh Barker Slough over to the the Sacramento River project. Uh and I forget how many years, that's time to be completed. But the Parker Slough is also troubled with the fact there's a lot of endangered species there. So there's restrictions on how much water can be drawn out of that slough at those times when uh the fish population would be affected by it. So that's what he says, well, it fluctuates our reliability. Uh and I certainly expect there would be, probably a savings in cost for the better quality of water coming from Sacramento River, used to be Sites Reservoir. Uh than what we're, well, I think Slough kind of describes the quality of the water. It's coming through American Canyon. But uh it's a, I'm excited to see the project go forward. I think it's really speaks to uh future forward thinking of a city council at times, saying, you know, this is something we need to secure the water we have rather than having to uh go back and forth, I'll put it mildly like that, that's where we get our sources from. With that, I think I saw Councilmember Oro, your hand up?
Yeah, Mr. Hernandez, as long as I'm on council, we will not be giving up those slices of pizza. And the reason why is this is four thousand acre feet every year once this project is built. Which, when 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 I recommended that we move it up from twenty five hundred or two thousand acre feet to another, to double that amount. Um I asked specifically, what would be, how much water would we need at build out? And I think we're at four thousand feet or so, maybe a little bit more, but no longer will we rely on the state water project um limits. Uh so that said, I'm 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 all for this, you know, I'm a little we're almost there, it's further along than ever. Um but you know, if the voters of California voted for a bond measure to create more water storage facilities, and it hasn't happened in over like ten years, if we can't make this happen, um no, it's it's a sign of a failed state, the state of California, that you can't create more water. So I'm looking forward to this happening as well. Thanks.
I do recall that uh that meeting, Councilmember Oro, and I'm gonna, I would compliment and say, good move on your part to that conversation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, and I would echo that. Uh Councilmember Oro, good job being forward thinking. And and I think it serves us well. But the the only, and I and I support Sites Reservoir and our participation and and it's critical. But as as the mayor mentioned, it's Barker Slough that worries me, and that technically isn't part of the Sites Reservoir. But whatever we can do to support that alternate intake plan, I know we adopted a resolution of support. Uh going forward, that's something I think this council needs to be on top of and do whatever we can to to campaign for that. Because uh, you know, it it is the Achilles heel of our water system. And so the sooner we can fix it, uh the better. But for Sites Reservoir, uh it's a great project and and I support it entirely. Thank you.
Any other council comment at this time? Public comment on this matter?
We have received no written comments on this item. And I have no hands raised at this time.
No, if the comments close, we will move on to uh council's action. I think there's a resolution, yes.
Well, if there is no further comments, I will make the motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon authorizing the city manager to execute the third amendment of the Twenty Nineteen Sites Reservoir Agreement.
Oh, second. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, counsel. We'll be on out to our next item, would be.
Thank you, Mayor Castle.
Thank you. American Rescue Plan Act. American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one, ARPA funding.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Felix is going to stay on for a trifecta today with you all. And Pope Works Director Smithies is going to join us as soon as Teresa can bring her over. And and Lincoln also is going to join us. Our Finance Director Lincoln Bogart is going to join us as well tonight. This item is a continuation really of some direction the council gave back at our meeting in February. Where we talked about funding we were receiving from the federal government, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA is the acronym. Some of the funding that we so we part received partial funding and will receive more of it. And so we brought some conceptual ideas to council. We've been discussing this a number of meetings actually with the council since since last year when this funding became available. And we brought forward some recommendations on how to appropriate this funding. And with that, I'm going to not steal Erica's thunder too much and let Director Smithies kind of give you a brief presentation on the the proposed projects and appropriations for the ARPA funding. So Erica, take it away.
Thank you, City Manager Holly, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As Jason said, I'd like to share share my screen and share with you the proposed project we're bringing forth to council. Discuss on the American Recovery Act project. Just one moment, please. So taking consideration of council's direction in February, we came up with approximately six projects. The that are portrayed here, Benton Way, Class Two bike lanes and intersection improvements on the east side of twenty nine. Dalton, Shenandoah and Silver Oak Trail.
There you go, presentation hadn't loaded yet. Now you're now you're gone.
Oh, sorry. Jumped ahead. But here are the the projects, we're proposing approximately nine million dollars in projects with. And there are six projects, they're they're a combination of of pedestrian bicycle improvements as well as utility and pavement infrastructure projects. The first project we recommended was was a Benton Way Enhanced Crosswalk. This project was taken directly from our pedestrian plan recommendations. This might, I think it needs to be refined further based that we're rehabilitating Benton Way as well as putting in pavement rehabilitation later this year with the recycled pipeline project. So this could be enhanced with as far as high visibility crosswalks and more areas and corridors.
Think you want to advance the slide, Erica? You might want to advance this slide because I don't think it advanced.
Are we, am I taking too much time here as far as?
No, it's just your slide presentation isn't advancing, you're still on slide two.
Wow, okay.
I I think it's just maybe maybe a lag in connection there, Erica. Unfortunately, I don't have this presentation, otherwise I would share my screen.
I have it. You want to unshare your your screen, Erica?
Definitely. Thank you.
I've got it on my end and let me let me drive for a moment.
You know, the one night I'm like, I should probably stay at City Hall, the weird wind, the glitches.
Oh, goodness. From the beginning. Oh, that's.
Good thing I forwarded this afternoon.
Yeah, hold on one second, I gotta open it on the right computer screen. That's a weird. Screen. You would think I know how to use PowerPoint, but I don't.
Jason, I have it, I'd be happy to share this if you'd like.
I think I've got it, Felix, give me one second. Can the council see that now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
So this was the Benton Way project, is that it? Is that clear?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, here we go.
All right, this is the project that we're actually going to be paving Benton Way with the recycled pipeline project. The recommendation is to expand this more further as far as improving, enhancing the crosswalks all along Benton Way as well as probably the corridors of Chaucer and Elliot Drive would still be within the proposed seventy five thousand dollar project appropriations of ARPA. Next slide, please. Here's a robust Class Two bicycle upgrade plan on the east side of Highway twenty nine, Donaldson, Shenandoah and Silver Oak Trail. We've been including the green bike conflict zones on the approaches to the intersections as well as implementing high visibility crosswalks. Right now, we just have the sidebar crosswalks in all these intersections, but then we would implement the ladder or the run to help brighten the areas and locations at all intersections along this corridor. This project's proposed with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and could be taking place this later this year within this this calendar year for sure. Next slide, please. Elliot Drive, the mid block crossing in front of the senior center and also Elliot the the trail. This has been brought up quite a bit, at least miles past year here at the City of American Canyon, that needs to be an enhanced crosswalk with rapid reflector beacons. It's approximately fifty thousand dollars alone for just the rapid beacons. So this would improve the crosswalk, the the curb ramps and also put in the flashing beacons at this crosswalk. Another project that could take place later this year. Next slide, please. Melbourne Road sidewalk and drainage improvement projects. This is a project that will include continuing sidewalks between Caffir and Wilson Way. There's there's sidewalk gaps on both sides of Melbourne. It improve drainage, there's been a long term drainage issue, implementing drainage improvement. The sidewalk gap closure continuity. And there's also underway with the Napa Cove apartment complex, affordable housing complex. There will be traffic calming reviewed, the traffic study on that project, the condition of approval. So the goal would be, the goal would be to incorporate some of the traffic calming measures with this overall project. This is a this is a substantial improvement project, therefore it'll take more design time this fall. So the the idea that it probably be out to construction next year. Approximately half a million dollars in in ARPA funds and another half a million dollars in Measure A funds to complete the storm drainage improvement, which would become for Measure A. And then whatever we receive as far as recommendations and traffic calming along this corridor with the goal that this is, these are implemented before the affordable housing project is issued occupancy. Line, please. Knightsbridge Reconstruction Water main improvements. As many of you are aware, we've had a lot of calls in with water breaks along this corridor already. It's it's one of the top three for improvements from our utilities division and apartment. It's also a road that's needing pavement reconstruction along this corridor. So the goal would be to replace the, the sewer improvements are are good. So we're just talking about replacing the the water main on on the main corridor here between Dan Rose and Elliot and the the cul-de-sacs along this section and then applying the reconstruction, probably a full depth recreation project on the main Knightsbridge street and then doing a two layer cake seal micro surface treatment on the cul-de-sacs and making these also high vis crosswalks and bringing the curb ramps up into ADA compliance. This project's about two million dollar project, utilizing a mixture of ARPA funds, Measure A, Measure T funds and utility funds. Next slide, please. Here's a robust section of Rancho Del Mar, it's our basin, we have a lot of INI issues in this corridor or in the subdivision area, it's one of the oldest subdivisions in the city. We're recommending sewer improvements, water main improvements. Reconstruction of Rio Del Mar from approximately the west side of twenty nine all the way to West Carolyn Drive. And then surface treatments on the other sections of the road. This whole section needs sewer improvements. The Rio Del Mar itself is okay with sewer, but we're upgrading our four inch to six inch water mains to eight inch on sections of a lot of this, this is this is the biggest project, approximately six million dollars. And it'll be a combination again of ARPA, Measure T, roadway funds and sewer and water utility enterprise funds.
Director Smithies, what is INI?
INI is groundwater and and rainwater intrusion into our sewer mains where they have leaks or fissures and they collect the groundwater and rainfall instead of just collecting sewer. So it increases our our treatment requirements at our plant. And so isolating and and being able to seal all these gravity sewer mains. That's what we're recommending is lining the sewer mains, not necessarily doing the conventional trench line. It's lining the sewers and making them whole again. The the pavement's really going to be your big kicker on this. I provided really rough estimates with the council report. They'll be refined as we move forward, but we'll be looking at again high visibility crosswalks in these locations with the reconstruction of the streets or surface treatments, ADA curb ramps upgrades as well as looking at the the any improvements to the valley gutters that are necessary. Some of these streets, I went through them, are really needing some TLC. So it'd be nice to be able to take care of this as a package project. Again, this is a big infrastructure and pavement project, so it'll likely be next year. But we'll need some design work on this to take take place beginning of this summer. Next slide, please. And and here's the breakdown of revenue sources. Now, as council may be aware, we have about approximately four point nine million dollars of ARPA funds coming in. One time funds, we have about half of it in hand now, the other half coming in July. Council's direction was to to hold back about ten percent of the reserves. So we we've kept back a half a million dollars as a placeholder for future programming efforts that the council decides to direct. The rest of the revenues that we're projecting to bring online is the Measure T. This will need a public hearing for any streets that weren't already included in our adopted five year plan that went to council in December. We already have a water main project for this year, possibly one point three million. So we would use those funds towards the revenues in addition to next year's water main replacement fund for the total of one point six. And then the sewer CIP fund will come from the enterprise for that portion of work and approximately Measure A, half a million dollars for a total revenue commitment of nine million. Right now, we're only asking for council's appropriation of the ARPA funds towards these projects. And we could get going on the near term projects for this year. Meanwhile, we will program the the remaining anticipated funding sources into the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year budget. And we have, again, we have Felix Hernandez, Director of Maintenance and Utilities on board here to answer any questions regarding the utilities and our Finance Director Lincoln Bogard. Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you can you leave the presentation up? Because don't, 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 don't get out of it.
Yeah. I think I'll probably want to scroll back and forth to some of the.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, great. So if you can go to the first slide where we're doing work, I just kind of want to walk through these really quick. Is that the first one? Okay, so first of all, before I begin and I have a a couple of comments on 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 some of the project areas. First of all, I want to thank you and staff for thoughtfully bringing something forward. I know for us, when we, for the council, when we were given a windfall of cash, that is ARPA funds. It was, it gave us pause, confusion and excitement all at the same time. And we didn't know what to do with it. I think we had several discussions prior to this presentation, talking about what we needed and what we wanted. Whether it be like nice shiny object that we can do for a new park or would it be really nitty gritty stuff that really moves the city forward that is infrastructure related as well and that hits areas that, you know, needs that need to be addressed. I actually think of this whole thing, and as you were going through this presentation. If we have Watson Ranch as a net new on the other side of town, you know, we're going to create some net new streets and sidewalks and safety measures here that will really revitalize a lot of these neighborhoods. And I'm excited about what you guys are presenting here today. And also like the fact that, you know, there's still a little bit left over as we as we kind of think through things. And most importantly, I'm excited that this money and work will be done within next, this year and in the next year. So it's looks like we're going to have a lot happening in the next two years in terms of infrastructure improvements across the city, is that correct?
You'd be correct, yes.
That, and that's just, it sounds fantastic, because I think I I've only been on this council for five years and I'm like, well, that street's going to get paved one day and that street's going to get paved one day. And this thing's like, well, there's going to be a lot of streets paved this year and this is in the regular maintenance program that we do. One thing that I would like to keep in mind, and I think you're keeping this in mind, but I want to reiterate this. As you improve these streets, think about traffic calming, think about pedestrian safety, think about safe streets. We've heard that a lot from our citizens, you've heard it a lot from council, there's now petition going on about it. So wherever we can make these streets safer, either for pedestrians, bicyclists, people with disabilities, whatever it is, anything that is antithesis to a car speeding down our local streets. I'm supportive of making it happen, whether it be a speed bump, a stop sign, a a new crosswalk or a or another police officer would be good. So that said, that's my general comment, I'm excited about this. Could you flip through the next slide, please? All right. This is great, I'm glad to see this. I just wanted to let you know that I did have a resident reach out to me who takes a right onto Donaldson coming out on the near near Newell Drive, one of the last exits there. And you'll see that Donaldson bends. That bend turns into a lot of cars turning quickly, moving quickly without looking. This happens on Silver Oak as well down there, and so any traffic mitigation here would be great. I applaud this, I think it's going to be fantastic. Just know that residents have come to me and said that I I actually walk my dog on these streets a lot and people turn that corner pretty quickly. Next slide. Nothing here, this is good, I think it was, keep going. Yes, so this one, I'm hoping Beth, Beth Marcus is still on the line. I was going to call you out on the fact this is one of the main roads that people speed on. It's an easy road to speed on. I always test myself going down that road, maybe a little bit too fast, but I slow down because I know Beth is there and now Donaldson's there and Chuck Fish is there and everybody's looking at me as I go down that street, so I go slow. But it's very easy to go fast on that street. And so I'm looking forward to making sure that Napa Cove helps with those traffic mitigations. Question on this, is sidewalks on one side or both that on Melbourne?
Did you hear me?
No, we did not.
Oh, but both sides.
Great, well, okay, great.
There's there's gaps on both sides, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, all right, but we will have, we have complete sidewalks on both sides.
That is the goal, yes.
Okay, great, the next slide, please. This is good, next slide, I don't have any comments here. Okay, this one here, just had, this is great, I love this. It's it's one of our core neighborhoods and it it does need utility improvements and paving. Just a question on Lost Altus Drive, where the label is. We just recently paved that road, are we going to do that again or is that just there just for completeness?
I made an error.
Okay.
I I admit it, I made an error and I drove it after I put this forward and I realized that section's been done, which which will help us it builds a more contingency that maybe we can do more. I also need to confirm that we did the utilities underneath. The the paving treatment's actually the lightest part of that treatment, it's really what's. It's really what's underneath, whether or not we did the sewer and the water. I need to confirm that with staff.
Okay, all right, good. Just know you've got Eagle Eye council members here. We're looking at every one of these. We know these streets well. So thank you, Eric. And I think that's all the questions and comments I have.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, well, I would echo Councilmember Oro's comments. I am excited. This is a very, it's exciting because there's a lot of stuff happening, but it's also pretty well distributed. So it's not all the older parts of town, even though they need the most TLC. And so I'm very excited about the whole project, particularly Melvin, because it really is a problem. And investing a lot of money to turn that section into a calmer road will do a lot for the neighbors that have suffered there because they haven't complained as much as other parts of town, but they suffer more than anyone else. The amount of cut-through traffic that goes through there is amazing and all that. So it's a good thing. Now, the only comment I would make on Melvin is the side, we did the sidewalk to Donaldson and James, and now we're doing it from Melvin to Wilson. But there's the gap from Wilson over to Donaldson. So I don't know, you know, there's a little bit of sidewalk gap to connect the dots. So and I don't know if there's a program to address that in the works, but I would ask that somebody check that out and see if it's something that we can address in some fashion. That would be my first comment. The other one on Rio Del Mar and all of the improvements there, there's a couple of spots on Rio Del Mar. I know at Los Caser or Caser, and I think at Los Altos, where whenever it rains, it pedals up. And I think the problem was the storm drains aren't big enough, and so they just overflow. So when you're doing all of this, are you looking at storm drain improvements as well as water sewer and so forth?
We definitely should take a look at that when we're in there. And also, the valley gutters, I think, are also a problem in there. There's a couple of broken, very severely broken concrete sections.
And also, well, that may be part of the Melvin thing because there's a sidewalk gap from, as you're going down Rio Del Mar, right there at the intersection of Melvin and Caser, as it connects up to Rio Del Mar. The sidewalk ends, and it's actually, this is one of my main walking points. So that little stretch there is really obnoxious because not only is there no sidewalk, but the area has a lot of weeds. So you're kind of out in the road, and that's where everybody hits. So if we can get some sidewalk there as part of the package, that would be great and really would reduce some danger. Like I said, overall, I'm excited. This is great. My only hesitation is I would probably give yourself an extra year in the timeline. I think these are some big projects, and sometimes they take longer than you think. But, you know, knock yourself out if you can get it done sooner. But just to manage expectations, this might be, you know, up to three years before it's all done. And with that, I say thank you. Thank you for the job and the presentation.
Yeah. Ms. Smithies and Senator Mantra, I'd like to add something, not to get out in the weeds here, but to Councilmember Justice's point and Councilmember Oro, is that if you recall, as a few weeks back, we first started discussing this, and what we mentioned was priority, right? And we go, how do we establish a priority? And so to do the collaboration between Maintenance and Utilities and Public Works, we took these high-priority areas for utilities and then worked with engineering for the priorities for paving. And the purpose of that is exactly your point, Mr. Justice, the Councilmember Justice, is that we don't want to be paving over stuff and then coming back and putting utilities in. So we were really diligent in our coordination and our prioritization of these areas and keeping that in mind. And Councilmember Oro, to your question, I think when you spoke to, what is INI? Ms. Smithies did explain what INI is, but I think maybe you mean, what is I and I? So it's inflow and infiltration are what that means. Inflow and infiltration. And then Ms. Smithies then explained what that means, right? It's essentially stuff coming into the sewer that doesn't belong in there. So thank you, Mayor and Council.
I'd like to appreciate this while we're on the Melvin Road piece. I've driven it a number of times. I think on the west side, there is about nine parcels that don't have sidewalks. There's portions of an older, pretty narrow sidewalk on that side. Part of my concern that I raised before, and I'm assuming from the coloration on the map, this is going to take care of part of Wilson Way down to, what is that, James Road? If you think about kids going to school from the Cove, you know, probably the more immediate need, I think, is to get the east side all the way down and then pass Mid City. Somehow there has to be some property acquired there, I would think, unless there's a different plan. That connects you down now to James Road. Now you've got front of a house, then you have the fire station and all the way down to Donaldson Way. And there's an easy route from there to school or all the way down, walking path all the way down to the supermarket. So that takes care of that. I think there probably needs to be a cross here. There's too many times I've seen, it would be about middle-school age kids crossing over from Wilson Way from south to the right of that intersection. It's just there's, it's the fence line. Doesn't leave any area to walk. And so it needs a, that's why I'm very pleased to see you're here, that pass being considered on both sides with that. But I think as we look at segments that we do it, that whole planning process, you have to attend to utilities and et cetera. About a timing with being able to get at least a safe route out for kids going to school and those who want to walk over to Canyon Plaza or Safeway, Canyon Forest, that would be a good route. I do think, we have some, a lot of community interested in traffic control speeding. I think this area lends itself to a discussion around what would be the appropriate way to handle this, the speed math work in here. I think that might be something to consider as well. I know the, part of the information, not far off the track on it, but for state regulations as to what you could do with traffic control measures, as I understand it, et cetera, that would need to be a part of this conversation. This, I've been down this road, like many of us, too many times. I watched that traffic control speed light, thought, okay, I want to go by 25 as best I can. And somebody just barrels past me on the left, you know, just racing like. You know, it's just, there's an accident waiting to happen, and that, there really is. And then when we have families over here in this area here around the Cove, I just get more concerned about, you know. You want to go to the first slide, please, there on Elliot? No, I'm sorry, on across the school? Yeah, this one. Yeah, that one there. Any, you've been down this, the afternoon with school? There is a mob of kids going down this street in cars as well, back and forth. So it's a bit chaotic. It's crazy for about 20 minutes twice a day, Monday through Friday. And I really appreciate this design work here. I think something that gets attention to students and drivers. Frankly, it needs some more of a crossing guard attention in these two areas here. There and upon Bennett and Donaldson Way. So I appreciate that. Say slide down to the next one, please. Next slide. Yeah, the bike lanes are a good idea. I thought Councilmember Oro is around in that area. Certainly he's very familiar with what traffic patterns are in and out of that neighborhood. Next slide, please. Elliot Drive, this, what we have, crosswalk identified by the Adult Activity Center. It's been relabeled. That's a, that's a school bus stop right there also. So another good reason why to have attention to that. And again, I have, on occasion, seen a car pass a black school bus with flashing lights on it. On occasion, I've seen one of our local police taking that person to task. So that's good. Next slide, please. It's Melvin, okay, next slide. Well pointed out. That needs some work. And we're doing a lot of waterline repairs in there, I understand. Next slide, please. One of the oldest sections in town. Managed to get ahold of a, what's that to me, my son, the newspaper advertisement dated in September of 1954. And this was one of the earliest developments in Rancho. Over here is where Teresa connects. There's no street there. There's just a gap between the houses. And I don't know how often that has received the attention in terms of repaving it. But my understanding is it's clay tiles and three-inch cast-iron sewer lines, if I've got that right. And the upgrades, I think, are certainly in order and certainly maintaining the conditions of the infrastructure in the streets. Good selection, thank you. Right. Any other council comment? And for this evening, we need a resolution. Unless there's more, oh, I'm sorry, public comment on this matter.
We received no written comments on this item. I have two comments waiting from attendees. First up is Cara Vernor. Go ahead, Cara.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I first just wanted to quickly say hello to the council members. I recently stepped in as Executive Director of the Napa County Bicycle Coalition, and I really look forward to working with you. I suspect my predecessor, Patrick, was an often attendee at your meetings. But for those who may not know, our mission is to make bicycling in Napa County safe, convenient, and accessible for all people of all abilities. So we were really thrilled to see the pedestrian and bicycle improvements proposed with the ARPA funding and just wanted to show up and support those improvements, ask for your support in those improvements. And also to mention, you know, it's heartening to hear folks mention traffic calming so much. That's something we're very much in supportive as well. And through our Safe Routes to School partnership, we, over the last couple of years, did assessments of all the barriers to safely walking and riding to school around Napa County. And the American Canyon reports, the drafts are out right now, being reviewed by stakeholders. So as we finalize those, we hope to work with city staff to shed light on the project and potentially, as they move into implementation, be able to contribute perspective of those who participated in those walk audits, which include a lot of recommendations and some of them in the areas where the projects are going to occur. So, yeah, and I'll just wanted to say we really support the proposed projects and hope that they get adopted. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I have Hugh Marquez. Go ahead, Hugh.
Hello, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening, welcome.
This sounds like a very good project. I just had a couple of questions. On the Melvin Road where the apartments are going to be, are they going to pay for the improvements in front of their project? That was one question I had, and will they help? I hear, I think it's great that we're talking about traffic calming devices or ideas, and will they be part of that and paying for some of that since they will be bringing a lot of traffic onto Melvin Road? So that was one question I had. The other question I have is, I'm glad Dave Oro caught it, is the Los Altos from Rio Del Mar to Teresa, that was just recently repaved. And I believe all this, it was repaved because of all the sewer lines being done. And I'm just curious that on Rio Del Mar from Carolyn to West Donaldson Road, if the Los Altos part of drive does not be done, it does not need to be done, could that part of the road be used, done instead? All, it looks like all the sewer lines are done. As you can, if you drive down that road, you can see where the work has been done. And I believe that part of the five-year plan was to have, was to repave some of Donaldson Road in front of the park and stuff. And I think it would be a great tie-in to the work that was, I believe it's part of the five-year plan, that Community Park One would have, would be repaved. And so I was just curious if that could be considered. I think, I think all in all, it's a very good plan. The, again, the Melvin, if we are having developers come in, come in, and if they are not being asked to pay for that, if they can be charged something to do other parts for our city? Because we, again, as we're seeing here, we have a lot of our city that is old and does need to be, infrastructure needs to be upgraded. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I have no other, I have no other hands raised in the audience.
Well, close public comment. Return to council for the discussion, desired action. Councilmember?
Yes, I would just like to follow up on Hugh's question on Napa Cove. Can we get some clarification? Was Napa Cove conditioned to either make some of these improvements or at least contribute towards some?
They were conditioned to make recommendations and I believe cover at least the extents within their frontage for any improvements. But I'd have to review that and get back to you on it. And they're also, you know, required to pay impact fees.
Well, that will certainly contribute. And I understand it's an all-affordable housing project. So it's not like a typical development where you're, they're trying to make money. So, but it would be good to see if they can contribute in some fashion, especially since the Melvin Road improvements will definitely benefit their residents and kind of address some of the angst that was generated in the neighborhood, too. So, thank you.
Allison, action item, council? A resolution, the RPA?
Well, whoever wants to, I've got it up on my screen. So I'll take a stab at making a motion. Resolution number 2022, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, resolution appropriating 4.9 million of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA in fiscal year 2021, '22 for use on eligible infrastructure projects.
Thank you.
Motion, second roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
A resounding yes.
Councilmember Oro, Washington?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, Felix, and Lincoln for the presentation.
Good presentation. I appreciate the work done on it. I think we all do. It's going to be a significant improvement in the areas of American Canyon. Item 13, county-wide climate action committee priorities for 2022.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Joseph and Councilmember Washington are appointed to represent American Canyon on the Napa Countywide Climate Action Committee. on the Napa Countywide Climate Action Committee. And I understand from some of the the recent meetings that the the committee had, they started talking about priorities for the upcoming year and and it's been a little while since since the our appointees had really checked in and and connected with the council and updated the council on kind of the going. So we wanted to have Mark and Pierre kind of summarize where the committee's been and what they're looking at for twenty twenty-two and get any, you know, direction or suggestions and make sure that they're not just bringing their own ideas, but bring in what the council wants from this body to it. So with that, I'll turn it over to to Mark and Pierre and the information that was provided from the staff in Napa County as a fault of the last meeting is included in the packet and that maybe it gets starting place from from where we go.
If I can start off, yes, the purpose of this is to get feedback from the council. So when we attend our next Climate Action Committee meeting, we can say, here are the here are the one or two priority projects for the following year. And bear in mind, we will be contributing. So where there's a cost associated, I don't know what the the formula is necessarily, but we will be contributing or asked to contribute our share towards those costs. If you did look at the the survey results, what was clear is investing in the electrical vehicle charging stations, blueprint is how they're describing it, to kind of figure out how we get to our, you know, in our case, some two hundred-plus chargers that over the next two or three years. So that was clearly a high priority by everybody who took the survey. And so to some extent, that's kind of a shoe-in. But there may be a little bit of capacity for a for a second project, and that's where the fun begins. If you look, the second highest ranking was the all-electric building code. But if you look closely, there was a lot of people who thought highly and a lot of people who didn't think so highly. So I'm kind of partial to that, and so I'm going to editorialize and argue that why it's relevant to American Canyon is we're about to build, you know, twelve hundred homes in Watson Ranch and probably a number of apartments along the corridor and, you know, on and off. If we adopted an all-electric code now, we could basically capture a lot of the greenhouse gas reductions through that new development. And it's it's far more cost effective to do it now while you're building it new than to try to retrofit. So so for American Canyon, considering that all-electric charge or code is relevant. Now, for other parts of the county where they're mostly built out, it may not be as relevant. But for us, I think it's something really worth considering. One of the recommendations that have been made is that it ought to be an all or nothing. And that's where the real problem comes in, because I suspect there's some jurisdictions up Valley that don't want to be bothered, that they would rather wait, you know, for the next building code cycle when it will probably be a requirement. Right now, I think it's something like it's encouraged or whatever. I don't know what the standard is that says not mandatory, but you really ought to think about it. That's what the current code will say, unless we wanted to amend it for our purposes. So that's pretty much the only pitch I wanted to make is I'd like to consider the all-electric reach code as our second option or or second project if if we have the capacity. Other than that, happy to answer questions and and give Councilmember Washington the chance to talk.
Just to echo what you what you were saying, you know, one of the one of the benefits that we had, we had an opportunity to speak with a representative from MCE to talk about like deep green opportunities of our residents could take advantage of. The biggest piece that I took away from all this is just the education piece. We could sit there all day long and talk about what we need to do. But until we get in front of some of our residents and kind of explain to them the benefits of what we're trying to push forward to accomplish, we won't accomplish it. I agree with Councilmember Joseph when it comes to the survey and and looking at the the priorities that we were looking at. I agree that the EV goals was one of the the highest ranked concerns of the population or actually the people, the amount of people who have gone to electric vehicles have grown almost two hundred percent, you know, and those are just my numbers. I haven't had anything official, so I don't want I don't want to use use those numbers against me. But I but I truly believe we have we have the support of a lot of people to be able to push this information out. And Councilmember Joseph is doing an excellent job facilitating and getting people to educate us so we can take that information and put the put that information out to our resident. I was kind of disappointed on the numbers of people. I think we had a, I can't remember the number at the top. All my notes were at my house when I abandoned my house on the on the on the power thing. But I believe it was like twelve percent was the was the number that they were looking at that they provided to us of people who are utilizing, you know, the the
Deep Green.
Yeah.
Actually worse than that. It's it's like less than one percent are on deep green accounts.
Yeah. So 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 just getting us out of our residents and and talking to them about, you know, looking at your PG&E bill, you know, getting involved with the understanding what MCE is all about. I mean, for for a long time, I was one that complained about the MCE part of my bill. But as I as I learned and educated myself, you know, through this committee, I I realized the benefit moving forward. So, yeah, that's my take is just, you know, you know, in in future committee reports, I plan on putting more information, more links out there so people can log on to those those links and get more information and sign up for them.
Also, to Councilmember Washington's point on on public education and awareness, the ad hoc committee, at least some or all of its members, will be actively involved in this year's Earth Day activities out at Wetlands Edge on April twenty-second, I think it is. So that will be another opportunity where we work with MCE and others to try to get that that word out and let people know what the options are and what's available and incentives and so forth.
Anything else for the presentation on the presentation side?
Oh, and and we're ready to ask any questions.
Yeah, I was, I'm looking at the graph here on color-coded ones, EV charging stations. A lot of these bullet points got a little dot dotted and I'm not able to find out what was the substance of that line. More details doesn't work on this one. Somebody could send that over so I could better understand what the each item on that graph represents. Has there been discussion on generating electricity? There was a very interesting letter to the editor in the Register some weeks ago. Somebody's thinking on the fact that well, how do we generate electricity? The greatest portion of it in California apparently is natural gas. You burn it, it creates carbon dioxide. There's a lot of solar, but as I saw in the NG presentation, you know, it fluctuates with time of year. So more cars on the road, these electric cars, these more gas, electricity needs to be generated to supply that. There's been interest in some areas of revisiting nuclear with a far more sophisticated approach in engineering. We know that burning fuel produces carbon, methane, natural gas being probably the cleanest one we can get, hydroelectric. It's about that capacity. We're not building giant reservoirs anymore. But has been a discussion with climate action regarding the need for electricity and how we're going to generate it in a way that supplies it consistently. Anybody talking about? We talked about the consumer end of it. What about upstream as a source? Either you heard it.
In that regard, probably the most practical option would be revisiting the decommissioning of, what is it, Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant down south or on the central coast. That, you know, of building nuclear, I I'm not so sure. Yeah, that may not be the best idea, but but not necessarily shutting down the one plant that we already decided to shut down. This might not be the right time, but that's about as.
Well, I I would think that I mean, it's an important issue. I don't discard that at all. But if you're trying to avoid carbon production in, say, households using a gas furnace or a gas water heater, you need the electricity to be able to provide, you need to generate the electricity for that house. Electricity, where's that electricity come from? How's it been?
I think longer term, there's better strategies than nuclear. Shorter term, you know, if you've got a plant that's operating, it may make more sense to leave it going for a few more years.
But it's at, say, that capacity. Now you need more electricity. Where's your electricity demand?
There's some discussions where actually the cars become batteries on wheels that could, you know, that you can level your load as we all produce solar energy during the day, we can charge our batteries and then run those batteries that light goes through and so.
I see some great stuff on for emergency use of electricity for trucks now. I have things you plug into the, you can plug into your house and now you're in your house. I just think it's a very important conversation to have. Because you need to think of the source of how we're generating electricity. The demand that will go up with that, with converting everything to electric.
You did, and that the the Climate Action Committee did request some dialogue, and we did hear from a gentleman whose job is to forecast energy demand for electric vehicles. And I think his conclusion was there is sufficient energy for that sector. But realistically, you know, if you look at housing and all the other electrical demands, it still begs the question, do we have the capacity? And PG&E says they do, but.
Well, I'll see more information on that for the rest of the shirt. I know driving through the desert to my hometown, a lot of the dry lake beds are covered with solar farms. I mean, well, I was reflecting off it, I thought, well, it's full of water, but no, it hasn't rained. Got closer, and by God, they're in by the acre. I mean, one area is going thousand acres of solar panels. Well, step in that direction, provided it meets the demand. I just think this conversation needs to be had about how are we going to generate electricity? Going to go all electric. Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Joseph, Councilmember Washington, thank you for your work on this committee and giving us an update on this. Question, you've mentioned M MCE. Were they the sole presenters and on this, or was that just one part of this whole thing?
They were one, one of the most recent presenters. I think Councilmember Joseph has about three or four of them lined up for future, future. But our meetings, we've only had like three meetings already, and they were one of our presenters. We have some others.
What was MCE presenting on?
Basically, to have an understanding of what our customer base looked like, because that was one issue, as well as some of the incentives that are available for buying EV chargers. I think there's like thirty-five hundred dollars per port. So if you have a charger with four ports, theoretically, you can get fourteen thousand dollars, which helps to phrase some of that cost. So talking about that, the other issue, and and that's why the biggest concern I had was so very few people have deep green, the hundred percent renewable. One of the things that I've discovered as a solar panel with battery backup guy is if you go to deep green, it doesn't cost you anything. In other words, the during the winter months, when you're using a little bit of PG&E during the the evenings and so on, all of that is more than offset the rest of the year by the energy you produce. So when the true-up happens, you don't get anything, but you don't pay anything either. So to the extent that you aren't going to pay for whatever it is you use, why not sign up for for deep green? Why not use a hundred percent renewable? So I think, you know, if if, for example, our community is at ten percent solar, we should be able to sell that ten percent on going to deep green since it's essentially a no-brainer. You get.
Were were they the one, who was the one presenting the reach code on electric?
Well, that that's, we didn't really have a discussion on the reach code. This is for the Climate Action Committee, the countywide. They're the group saying, you know, where do you want us to go in terms of of priorities and and research? So electric vehicle chargers was clearly number one. The reach code becomes a dialogue of what should the countywide committee be focused on? And I'm just saying, we ought to look at the reach code because of our circumstance, but that's just me. So.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. I I think, you know, generally, I think all of those. First of all, we we have to say and remind ourselves that, you know, American Canyon leans on a lot of environmental policies in the county. Let us not forget that. And we've done that with our recycled water program and in other places. You know, I I think generally the the county updates are fine. I have serious reservations about the reach code and doing that, particularly in a place that's not only the wine capital, but probably one of the food capitals as well. And, you know, having people cook at home on electric stoves, that would be new to me. It'd be new with a lot of people. I think we'll have that discussion throughout the county to understand that and what that might look like. And then I probably need a big education on the benefits of that. I would never buy a home with an electric stove. I would prefer gas. And then, you know, I'm sure I could hear from the 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 natural gas lobby about the benefits of that too, right? So would like to have that robust discussion before we're setting up policy. What concerns me is that these, your your the the report that you submitted said they want to implement this by January twenty-three. And I'm not sure there's enough public comment time to actually have a worthy discussion around some of these things.
I would tend to agree. The problem with the all-reach is you need to basically drop what you're doing and scramble. And when you don't necessarily have everybody on board to start with, the idea of scrambling when not everybody's on board, I mean, take yourself as a, for instance, yeah, strategically, this is not an effective, the odds are against the all-reach at this point because of where we're at. Now, just to point out, there are a lot of health benefits because all the gas fumes from a gas stove does kind of add up. And so you may have, you know, if you're sensitive to asthma or other things like that, a gas stove may actually not be in your best interest, even if you do think the food's better. I have lived with an electric stove for twenty-five years and you know, I have, up until recently, I've been more than adequately fed. So.
You know, I mean, like the merits of each one of these things ought to be considered and debated throughout the county. I mean, I think I'm hoping that the Client Action Committee and throughout the county is making recommendations that they can bring up as a committee to have broader discussions in each of their jurisdictions. What I'm fearful of is that, you know, first of all, I think there's countywide support for this amongst this council and in the county for look for taking action on climate issues. What I don't want is to have that come right back at us as policy when we even didn't have the debate. And I I'm hoping, you know, worthy discussions come back to us and that we have these conversations in in a measured way, rather than ramrodding it through by the end of this year, just because that's an awesome climate action goal.
Yeah. Yeah, I certainly understand your concern and and my my guess is you won't be the only one who who expresses those on the Climate Action Committee. So I'm not sure where we're going to go with that. But a flip side might be, just as we have incentives to swap out, you know, old toilets for new low flows, maybe we explore the possibility of rebates to swap out a gas stove for an electric stove.
Yeah, I don't know. One, you flush down the toilet, one, you put in your mouth. So.
It's what you're saving that counts.
Yeah, I think, well, I think where where does the the best benefit alternatives to be measured as well, you know, the comes to mind, there was an issue in Napa on no drive-through restaurants. I think there was one skate. The issue was idling cars create a lot of air pollution. But where's the conversation about all the idling cars that stoplight, you know, in traffic congestion? I mean, you know, the bigger bang actually is improving traffic flow or moving to electric vehicles. My street, there's only one house on my street. My street, there's only one house on my street has a gas stove. During a public safety power shut off, very popular house, we're all there lined up with a coffee cup in the morning. Actually, she's very nice. She comes over and we get chai tea. So I think there's has to be uh further discussion on, on this. I'm, I'm uh very happy with the direction it's going. But I think there's a major way of following through on it. You can change out a gas water heater. Houses have, as in Europe, those little on-demand heaters, or it's keeping your tank hot all the time. It's when you use the, the hot water tap, it fires up and you get it almost instantly. It is, things have been improved like that. Uh but no, I think the uh, there's a, I think for me, what's missing is just that larger picture like I was describing earlier. You know, how do we generate this stuff? What's the impact of generating? Uh and I think that helps for me, you know, better, better picture, but uh we're challenged with. Uh any public comment on this matter?
I have received no written comments. I have no hands raised in the audience.
Well, this is more the informational items, I take it? Well, we appreciate, appreciate the work you both are doing on the committee. You know, that's uh it is vitally important for all of us to have a better understanding. I am very like uh Councilor Oral mentioned, I'm sure the, we're very proud of the fact of what we are doing in terms of uh inviolations of American Canyon. A lot of it to me is uh just on the leading edge of where we want to be for our future work communities. So appreciate that. Alright, I think now it's time for management staff oral reports.
Thank you, uh Mayor and Council. Park and Rec Director Akita has an update for us. Police Department Director Smithies has a, has an update for us. And uh Police Chief Greenberg uh also has an update on the excitement from earlier this evening. Uh and then I have a couple of updates too, so.
Uh before we, I just would point out, it's nine fifty-five, it's ten o'clock, we're supposed to decide to continue. Why don't we take that decision now?
Keep going.
Yeah, keep going. We're on the home stretch. We can do it.
Okay, Mr. Holly, please proceed.
Uh as we're bringing on uh the various folks here, we'll, we'll jump right into it. Ally, you can go first. But you are gonna have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. I was getting my computer situated. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um I just wanted to provide some community updates that are going to be happening the next couple of weeks. On March seventeenth, Seroptimus will be hosting a Saint Patrick's Bash at our Adult Activity Center. On March twenty second, the um Amcan Chamber will be hope, excuse me, on March twenty second, Amcan Chamber Youth Art Show will be taking place. On March twenty third, Napa County will be hosting a COVID nineteen vaccination clinic for um particip- for individuals five years and older. On March twenty fourth, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a coffee chat at the Redwood, uh Redwood Credit Union. On March twenty sixth, ACCPF will be hosting a Wild AC Fire Recovery Force and Wildfire hike in our new open space preserve. On March thirtieth, American Canyon High School will be hosting an AC Night Out. And on April sixth, we will be um hosting a joint PCS and OSAC meeting. For more information and details, you can visit our website and the community events calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. I'll move over to uh Director Smithies.
Thank you again. Um I want to give a quick update on the, you could, you could look at Sidewalk Gap Closure Project. We have finalized plans and we have our agreements and legal descriptions ready to bring to our um the three of the five property owners. We already have one agreement signed. And um this is the right-of-way acquisitions, one pending and three that will be per, um shared with property owners this week. Um we will likely go out to advertise on the next, probably by next week, um because we believe we have um willing participants in the right-of-way acquisitions now at this point. And so we hope to have the project out to bid by the end of this month. And um bids opened by the middle or end of April pending how, how things go and then come back to council in May. And then we have um Devlin Road. Uh we had a little bit of a blip with the rain this week, but we were still on schedule to pave this, at the end of this week. So um there'll be a lot of activity um in that area. So uh we hope to have a Facebook Live post um Thursday morning sometime, once the asphalt's underway. And um I also want to address a little bit of the traffic calming um we're hearing um in the social media and um the public comment tonight. We do have a traffic working group comprised of the police chief, fire chief and myself. We've been meeting on and off since the walk and roll to school this fall, last, this past fall um to address the concerns that we hear um that are submitted through traffic concerns online or C Click Fix. We also um have a couple of plans um underway um this year. As you heard um from the Bike Coalition this month, we received a, a draft um audits, walking audits for the safe routes to school corridors, um literally last week. That, that um will be used and reviewed and provide feedback um to the Bike Coalition on behalf of the Napa County Office of Education. This was commissioned a couple of years ago. COVID slowed it down, but they just released um the draft last week. In addition, we have a local roadway safety plan. Um this will be looking at high incident corridors um for safety improvements. Um we just signed the contract with GHD um last week. So we're planning a kickoff meeting for that. This will be looking at like the, the roads, the corners like Melvin and others, not to duplicate efforts that are already underway. But to address citywide um high incident corridors and set us up for grant funding and programming future capital improvement projects. In addition, we were awarded a complete street assessment, um uh citywide complete street assessments through the Berkeley Safe Truck. This was applied for in February. We received a notification two weeks ago about it. And that will be kicking off. That's being handled by consultants Fair and Peers. Um Fair and Peers GHD are well-known in our city. They've done a lot of work for the city and on behalf of development, so they're very familiar with the city. And the ninety-eight participants so far in that change.org petition, I really want their feedback. When we go out to public outreach and we want to hear from you, we want to hear get feedback on, on the concerns of local community so we can address those in these plans and um and so everyone feels their buy-in. And um I already was con- um con- conversing with uh City Manager Holly on how we could have a joint meeting with City Council to address traffic calming in the near future. Um whether that happens during or before these plans start going out, um so we can hear from the community sooner um or midway, but we'll get back to you on that. Thank you.
Very good. I think we'd all look forward to a meeting about traffic calming. It seems to be certainly one of the biggest issues in town.
Now, I see Felix up here at Director Hennessy. Did you have an update as well?
No, I, I, I just got beamed in. I don't know.
That's okay. You already had three items tonight. You did, you already. We're gonna move on real quickly. Chief Greenberg's got a bit of an update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and uh members of the community. I just wanted to give a quick update on uh tonight's your events with the power outage. There's over like three thousand customers affected on the east, eastern port of town. I just wanted to let everyone know that uh when this happens, the police torment does provide extra patrols in the neighborhoods. And also uh at the traffic signals, we do traffic control when it's, when they're flashing reds or when, when the power is out. Uh until um we get the lights back up functioning. And also, I just wanted, it's a good reminder for the community to, you know, check batteries and flashlights. If you're using candles to provide light, just be extra careful so we don't, we don't have any house fires. I know the fire district would appreciate uh that as well. And also just secure your homes extra good. If you have house alarms and you don't have a backup battery, it's a good time to check that as well. Keep the doors locked. And if you see any suspicious activity, never hesitate to call nine one one. And that's all I have.
Do we, is, what's the status of the repair? Has it been fixed?
Hour was back on, oh, it's ten o'clock now. I want to say we're probably looking at hour and a half, hour and forty minutes ago.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Joseph, the, the, the power came back on as soon as I arrived at City Hall.
Well, then your journey was what caused the power to go back on. Thank you.
Thank you for your assistance. Chief Greenberg, um just a couple of quick updates on my end. Jen was affected by the, by the power outage herself and was going to get an update on our, on our community survey. We are currently advertising for folks to go online and take the community survey. Uh and so it's called the National Community Survey, NCS. And um, you know, we're excited to be able to share this with the community. It takes, you know, it's a substantial survey. It'll take about ten minutes of your time, really in-depth questions, but we want all of your feedback. So um at this point, anyone uh in American Canyon is, is available uh to take that. We've been doing a lot of social media blasts and updates and my manager's update on, on the link for that. So uh please give us your feedback and we'll collect all the data and have a presentation later this year. Once the company that did the survey has all the data aggregated for us. So that's ongoing. We um are going to be holding our first hybrid city council meeting, uh our next one, uh April fifth. Uh three weeks from today will be a hybrid format. And uh it's the first time we've ever done a hybrid city council meeting, although other jurisdictions have been able to, to do it. So uh we think the upgrades we made in the city council chambers uh will facilitate that. And uh most of the members of the city council will be here in person. Members of the public can participate uh in two ways. You can show up and participate uh in the customary way, in person and, and speak at the podium. Or you can participate like we do nowadays on Zoom. We're gonna try to uh be able to accommodate both both sets of uh ways to participate. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that, that we can pull off the, the technology and the, the extra work it's going to take for our city clerk and other staff to kind of be the traffic control. But I'm, I'm confident we can do it. We've made the investments in the upgrades and we're excited to be able to, to be back in person uh doing that. So that's an exciting update for April fifth. Assuming that all goes well, we'll then start talking about the commissions and other, other bodies and, and doing something for them uh in a hybrid format in May. Uh we're gonna test drive the council first. Lastly, um although we did get a little bit of sprinkles tonight, uh the drought conditions of former American Canyon really are, are very serious. We'll be having an update for council uh at your first, at your, at your next meeting on April fifth. Talking about the drought stage two and talking about the efforts, um you know, that we're making this coming year. Uh but it's something that we really have to reinforce the, the seriousness of it. So uh being smart with your water use, being aware of your water use. We still have uh what is, I think, a pretty low um turnout for our water portal. Uh we still only have about five or six hundred of our forty, of our fifty-five hundred customers registered. And so this is simply the easiest way of becoming aware of what your water usage is. And it's really hard to be mindful of your water use if you don't track what uh your usage is. So, you know, being able to find those leaks, those leaky toilets, those leaky services and so forth. Uh you can help everyone by just becoming aware of your own situation and that's literally signing up to a website. It couldn't be simpler. If you're having issues, you can call our utility billing uh folks and they'll, they'll walk you right through the signup process. But it lets you look at your water usage at your house that you're responsible for um within the last hour. So it, it's data that's only an hour old. You don't have to wait sixty days to get your utility bill anymore. It's, it's what happened in the last hour. And uh we've, we've found so many issues and so many discrepancies with, but people didn't even realize they were using water. And we go back and we look at it and then sure enough, they found leaks. We found leaky pools. We found leaky sprinkler systems. We found leaky toilets. We found all sorts of, of things that people didn't realize and it's, it's becoming aware uh of your personal water use. So that's our big message and the council will be getting a, a fuller update on April fifth. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. They used to uh have the uh, it was like a blue tablet you can put in your toilet tank, find out that's leaking.
Yeah, that's, that's still a possibility. It's um, the, the simpler way now actually is to just go onto the portal and, and it shows your meter usage, you know, you're, if, if none of your faucets or none of your fixtures are on.
And you're, yeah, it tells you you got a leak. It doesn't tell you exactly where, but.
Exactly. And then, and then, then you know there's an issue and then you can start problem solving. And, and yeah, those tablets can be a way of looking at the toilets um and, and, and it's, it's a process of elimination until you find it.
We can uh continue with the uh recycled water delivery?
We are, we are. We're looking at how to do, it's a very popular program. It gained in popularity uh towards the end of last year and uh became, you know, almost invariably popular. So uh we're, we're looking at ways to be able to do that again. Um we did some informal surveying of our customers and we, we found it kind of interesting. Um only about half of them were interested in actually paying for the service, which is a little unfortunate. Uh we offered it, you know, free of charge last year and some were willing to pay, but others, you know, I guess weren't, weren't willing to, to recognize that, that cost. So um you know, we're, we're struggling a little bit with trying to figure out how we can offer that. Uh you know, we're, we're investigating what it would take to hire a subcontractor to do the water deliveries, what it would take, you know, for the additional city staff, part-time staff. So, you know, we, we, uh we kind of bootstrapped that program last year. We're, we want to offer it again. But um, you know, it, it is a benefit. It is a service we're providing. And so there's some reason.
What's the savings to the city by uh offset from using potable water? Is there analysis on that?
Uh no, we, we um, we, we haven't looked at it from, from that perspective. You know, this, the recycled water delivery service is really meant for more of an outdoor use. So we, we haven't, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers and what the quantity delivered was. I don't have it off the top of my head.
You know, it's hard to imagine how many customers you would have to have on that. You know, admittedly, it's outdoor uh use, but you know, if you don't use recycled water, you're gonna use potable water and uh.
Well, we, we may be getting to a point later this year where we're not going to be using water outside. Where it's, the situation is that dire, we're gonna have to be evaluating uh what the appropriate, if any, outdoor water use is. We're gonna be looking at our larger customers um first and particularly our uh smaller, larger commercial customers who have landscaped areas and, and irrigation demands that don't contribute anything to their business. Um and really talking with them about why they're continuing to irrigate something that doesn't contribute to their business. It's a different conversation for residential because it does uh, you know, have implications for home value. But for commercial businesses, it has.
I always said, taking a lot of interest in the wastewater uh presentation we had this evening. There's certainly improvements there. But yeah, I just uh, it's good programming. I ask because we use it at our house. Succulent garden. But yeah, frankly, uh I've got uh to see. Uh we'll see ten, ten times, fifty, about five hundred gallons of rainwater this year. So those bazada barrels, I got ten of those. And using it judiciously. So you can get water off your roofs too. And that's free. Okay, moving on to the uh council uh, any reports? They will take up agenda items, future agenda items after that. Council of Washington.
Yeah, I uh got my report in late, but um the, the only thing I want to kind of say is that the theme of the night seemed to be the uh traffic calming. So I just wanted to thank Julia, uh Salvador, Tammy Wong and Beth Marcus for uh bringing them up today. And but things are, are happening and um I'll get my report in earlier next week.
Councilor Oral, anything to add to yours?
Nothing to add.
Got some good pictures there.
I'm glad you guys liked the photos.
Entertaining.
Councilmember Joseph, anything to add?
Nothing to add other than we did our crab feed over the weekend and that was a pretty good turnout and relatively uh, you know, went very smooth. And I just want to thank Public Works Director Smithies for getting the eucalyptus sidewalk project uh up and running. That has been a sore spot for a number of people, so getting it uh under control and, and moving forward is excellent. So thank you all very much on that one.
Uh see uh well, I just kind of speaks for itself. I just didn't want to raise something else uh this evening and it was a conversation I had uh with the uh Napa County uh master gardener in my house, my white lady. And what's going on in Ukraine? And she said, uh what's the national flower of Ukraine? Anybody know? Sunflower. One of the big uh agricultural products is sunflower seed or, or sunflowers is that one. Uh actually, if you go on uh uh Google and you look at uh national flower in Ukraine, you'll see how it became a a resistance uh motivator, I would have to put it that way. So I actually had this thought. She wanted to pass it on to some friends. She started some sunflower seeds in her uh starter plants and said, you know what, that'd be a good idea. Starter plants and said, you know what? That'd be a good idea. We could just maybe encourage people to buy the sunflower. You know, the woodlot in town for some years had that whole front. With sunflowers on it. This is more decoration. It's kind of a way of making a statement of support. Under a very harsh attack by, you know. Thanks. One of the comments I heard was Kalistoga is putting up the yellow and. Yeah, blue buttons on the signs in their windows in their houses in part. Was it like to grow stuff? I thought, well, that might be a good idea. So we'll see how far we can generate some interest on that. Just a way of reminding ourselves, every time you go by it, you're going to be reminded. A situation and you're reminded that that needs care. You have to take care of it. So that was a part of that. Future agenda items, I'm interested in a conversation on a traffic forum, but I do recognize the staff have some discussions ongoing. I think there's going to be an appropriate convergence of the conversations, I think, to the benefit of the community. I do know in previous issues we've had with it, there are state regulations. Regarding to what we do around issues like that, traffic speeds, I think. One of those issues. Stop signs, you know, we had for years, James and Devlin didn't show they had enough traffic there and so wanted a stop sign. Well. Now we've got stop signs. So I think that's probably a growth in the city or number of traffic. Anyway, I was, I was. Set aside some time to think about how we might put that together. To reassure safety. And everyone else. Anybody else? Oh, oh, okay. Well. We got our future and the council items as noted and report on calendar events coming up this year, none of this month. So we have been included in this at ten sixteen. Thank you all, everybody. Very productive evening. Thank you. We are enjoying.